Is he in real, he's in real estate or something?
Yeah, he's in real estate.
Okay. He's a, he's a smart guy. I, I'll think of sitting tall.
Okay, everybody, thanks for, I mean, sorry for the delay. I'm gonna call the Wednesday, April 10th, 2024 ZBA meeting to order. To all persons interested in or affected by the actions of the zoning board of appeals, you're hereby notified pursuant to Section 11 of Chapter 40A of the Mass General Laws of the, General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and all amendments thereto. The public hearing and following appeals will be held on Wednesday, April 10th, 2024, at the time indicated. I'd like to now call to order and introduce our board members.
Manny Elves.
Aaron Webb.
Larry Hurwitz.
And I'm Herb Bonusy, acting chair tonight. First order of business is we will be noticing, notice of recording. This meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being recorded and broadcast on the town of Bonestables government access channel in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20. I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known, seeing none. First order of business is the minutes, February, February 28th, 2024. Has everybody had a chance to read them?
One note, Mr. Chair. Paul Pennard did email in that there was a typo on page three. There was a word missing, so if you could just vote as amended with that.
Okay.
Thanks.
We'll vote as amended. Thank you, Paul. See, even when he's not here, he makes a difference.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Well, Paul in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, the first order on, of business on, well, the second order of business, really, is an old, is old business, Bay Ridge Realty. And without our fifth member here, we're gonna skip ahead to the next on the agenda, which is appeal number 2024-002, TFG Hyannis Hospitality LLC. TG, TFG Hyannis Hospitality LLC has filed an appeal of an administrative official's decision in accordance with 240-125B1. The appellant seeks to overturn the building commissioner's determination dated December 12th, 2023, that the project is outside of the ground-mounted solar voltaic, photovoltaic overlay district and that the proposed solar arrays or ground-mounted solar arrays not permitted at the property. Subject property is located at 35 Scudderav, Hyannis, Mass, as shown on Assessor's Map 289, as parcel 110. The property is located in Residence BRB zoning district. This was continued from March 13th. I will assign all members present, with the exception of Mark, who's not here yet, and hello.
Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was a former solar developer, so I don't know if that, you know, if you care or if it affects your position.
I'm actually, Mr. Chairman, I submitted a letter just now, emailed it earlier, but it was after business hours were over. First of all, Eliza Cox from Nutter McLennan Fish on behalf of Next Grid Orange LLC, which is the solar developer on this property. I submitted a letter to the board. Since this was originally filed, we have been in, and this will answer your question, Mr. Hurwitz, in communication with the building commissioner to talk about whether or not this appeal needed to actually continue to go forward. And since, since the continuance, we've had several conversations with the building commissioner about the matter. I received an email from him this afternoon, a little after 3:00, that after further consideration and conversation with legal, and he's here, if you have any questions of him, he's essentially rescinded the December 12th decision that we were appealing. So really, the matter is moot at this point, and we're asking for the application to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Okay, I will move that we withdraw without precedent, prejudice. Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that was easy.
Thank you.
And I was just gonna say, that's exactly seven minutes. And here he is. Okay.
That was easy.
Thank you. So now we'll be returning to the first item on the agenda. Old Business Appeal Number 2023-034, Bay Ridge Realty LLC. Bay Ridge Realty LLC has applied for comprehensive, comprehensive permit pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40B, Section 20, 21, 22, and 23. The applicant proposes to construct 14 housing units, 24 bedrooms, within four detached buildings and associated parking and site improvements on 3.95 acres for rental purposes in accordance with MGL Chapter 40B, 760 CMR. The unit mix shall contain, consist of six one-bedroom units, six two-bedroom units, and two three-bedroom units. Four of the units will be restricted as affordable for low or moderate income persons. The subject property is located at 900 Old Stage Road, Central Mass, as shown on Assessor's Map 192, as parcel 001. It is located in the Residence CRC zoning district. It's been continued from November 8th, 2023, January 10th, 2024, February 20, February 7th, rather, 2024, and March 13th, 2024. Members assigned were Herbert Bonusy, Paul Pennard, Aaron Webb, Mark Hanson, and Manny Elves. Paul Pennard is not here today, and we are going to, Larry, I believe, has been made up to date on that in accordance with all the little things. So, hello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Peter Freeman, Freeman Law Group, representing the applicant. And with me tonight are part of the team. We have our engineer, Matt Eddy. We also have Randy Hart from VHB, our traffic engineer, the principal of Bay Ridge. Dennis Cricato could not be here in person, but I do believe he's watching, although he can't participate, I don't think, by Zoom, but he's watching live stream somewhere. So, thank you for calling this to order. And really, we expect to be very brief because we have not made changes since the initial hearing, which was way back in November. The one question really, not that there might not be other questions, and of course, our team will answer any questions, but I'm gonna be the only one presenting right now. The question that had come up was a waiver that we had requested related to the saltwater estuary bylaw for the Board of Health. And we tried very assiduously for a long time to work with the Board of Health through Tom McKeen and the Board of Health. And it happens, but it just took a long time. And that's the only reason. We didn't wanna delay, so, just so you know, to reassure you, we didn't wanna delay. But it took, it took a long time, but finally, happily, from our viewpoint, we did get agreement from Tom McKeen, and there's an email that we submitted that's part of the record dated March 8th, with a letter attached to it from Assistant Board of Health, I should say, Vice Chairman of the Board of Health, Tom Lee, that basically agreed with our analysis, Matt's analysis, that the innovative alternative septic system that we're proposing and agreeing to conditions about it meets the standards that the bylaw basically is looking for in that saltwater estuary district. And that is 10 milligrams per liter of, from the flow, the nitrogen reduction amount, which is what it's all about, reducing nitrogen. So we've agreed, working with staff, who's been great as usual, to facts that relate that and refer to that correspondence, and then to a condition that will require that we do the system that the analysis provided by, by Tom Lee, which is now in the record, as I said, requires. So therefore, we think and believe that indeed, they have said literally that it could be, which really means can be approved. The normal process is you would get a variance from the Board of Health if you meet those standards. Because it's 40B, what they're basically saying is, their advice is, we can meet that standard, so we respectfully say it makes sense to grant the waiver. So really, that's all we wanted to present. If you wanna look at any of the plans again or ask questions to refresh your memory, that, of course, is fine. Otherwise, we had gone through, excuse me, we had gone through the draft findings and conditions with staff, made some suggestions, but we're all in concert that the, that the draft that is presented to you by the staff, we, we agree with, basically. So happy to, you know, answer questions or get right to the decision or however you wanna handle it. Thank you.
I have, I'm sorry, go ahead, please. Just one quick question, just more for clarification. Does the system have to be installed and proved to perform prior to any building? Or does it, does it just get designed and then it is understood based on the design that it'll meet the standard?
Yeah, correct, the latter. It's, you know, it'd be part, like any project, go submit building permit, start construction, will obtain a septic permit based on the design criteria meeting 10 milligrams per liter with the IA technology. And that 10 milligrams per liter is what they, you call at the pipe. So coming out of the IA unit, if you will, it's 10 milligrams per liter or better. And so that'll be a requirement of the design. We expect, you know, to meet better. The, we're planning on using the nitrix system. It's actually a tertiary treatment after you have an initial IA, which is, you know, the Septatec, or maybe a Waterloo, and then we add the nitrix. And they will guarantee, as part of their performance standards, the vendor, that we're gonna be, you know, getting better than 10 milligrams per liter. And they've done many projects around, and they're actually getting, you know, you know, pretty good numbers, even, you know, less than five in, in some areas, so. But that would be just part of the normal construction process.
Okay, thank you.
So a follow-up, a follow-up question. So you do as you propose. Would it then be subject to review or a walkthrough by the Board of Health? Is there a last step?
Yeah, I mean, it'll definitely, it'll be, go through an inspection process, like any Title V system, by both the, the town and by us as the engineer. Then there'll also be a monitoring agreement. All IA's require ongoing monitoring, you know, at a minimum quarterly. You know, it could, depending on the board's decision here, you could, you know, that could maybe be initially monthly for the first year, let's say, and then it goes to quarterly. And then usually on IA systems, after a couple of years, it actually goes to, you know, once or twice a year. But there will be a monitoring program. There'll be a, you know, a maintenance agreement executed with the vendor of the technology so that they're actually responsible for overseeing the operation of the IA and, and testing it and making sure that it's, you know, operating the way it's supposed to be operating.
Thank you. And Mark?
And in this instance, who's the monitoring agent for that? Is it town or is it private?
No, it's, it'd be the, there's a contract that'd be executed. You know, it could be different companies, but typically, and in this case, because the vendor that we're, will be purchasing the nitrix from, they wanna be able to control so that they can say, yes, we're, we're gonna be meeting better than 10. We need to have some control over that, so the contract will be executed with them, you know, 99% sure. And then, so that's the, so it's a third-party vendor, private party, that's responsible for the monitoring. But all that monitoring gets submitted to the town and/or DEP. And again, based on conditions that this board may, you know, want to put in, you know, it could add whatever might need to be added to give you the comfort level on that.
Thank you for the clarification. Me?
Yeah, one more. Given the delays that we've had here, is the timeline still the same? Are you looking for occupancy in September 2025?
I'd have to do calculations in my head. Did you say we had said September or December?
September.
That's probably a bit tight at this point, but, you know, we don't have any other subsidy programs that we're applying to, so there's no grant applications or anything like that that would delay it. And as you may remember, the applicant owns the site, so we don't have to go through any of that. So if it's April, May, June, well, you know, it might be, might be in the fall that we could get started.
Yeah, but yeah, I think you said 2025. I would say the construction.
Oh, it's gonna be sooner. I didn't realize it was 20.
Construction start, I would say, you know, in the fall, you know, maybe sooner if we can, and then occupancy, it's probably about a year. So I would, I would think and hope by September of 25, you could still, you know, you could start having occupancy of some of the units.
The reason I ask is, the letter we get from the Board of Health says that this could be approved if you incorporate the best available nitrogen reduction technology available at the time. And I guess what I'd like you to comment on is, the system you proposed is that state-of-the-art and expected to be for the time being, or?
The verbiage in the new Title V amendment, you know, it gives you all these, creates these gray areas, you know, in my mind and many others, I think. But yes, the, right now, it's my opinion that with us meeting 10 milligrams per liter, we're actually exceeding what DEP is requiring right now because of the way the amendment is worded. But ultimately, even, you know, down the road, 10, if you're doing 10 milligrams per liter or better at the pipe of the IA technology, you're, you're gonna, you're meeting the DEP criteria that from now until, unless they do another amendment until, you know, Title V would be amended. So I'd say, yeah, no, it would be, we're, would be meeting that criteria from here and, you know, five years from now if they don't make another amendment to Title V, so.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a few questions. I couldn't read the site plan very well, but there's a letter from Mr. Busby, and one of the things he asked for is a lighting plan. Do you have lighting on that plan in the parking lot?
We do have a couple of site luminars, and there's notation on the plan that identifies that all lighting will be, our sky compliant, foot candles will be, you know, lighting intensity will remain on the property. There won't be any, you know, encroachment by light across property line. And typically, what we do on that is that when we're submitting for building permit, because you have to have a, you select a lighting vendor who actually, you know, with a specific light fixture, that they can then run a foot candle photometric plan, and we submit that at the time of, of building permit.
Okay, you may need shades to keep the direction of the light.
Well, great, the requirements are, it's a 90-degree cutoff, so there's no uplighting, yeah, it's all downlighting.
Okay, I think, I mean, I've heard concerns of residents about the dumping and everything, and that, that's, could be a big issue. I mean, I know you have to do a 21E. What happens if you find contaminated soil?
I mean, they're gonna have to, you know, if it's a 21E and it's in an area that's being disturbed, they would have to deal with it.
Yeah, the statute, to amplify, the statute 21E, the state statute, definitely has real consequences. When you do that, there's reporting, and if there are, are the hazardous materials that are, you know, observed, then there's a whole set of protocols for the testing and mitigation that, you know, in a worst-case scenario, if there are some materials that are contaminated, they would have to follow the state protocol, which is closely supervised by DEP.
And do you have a contingency plan for that? Because, you know, I hear you're talking about when you're gonna start, when you're gonna finish, but if something like that happens, I mean, that could set you back.
It, it could, but, you know, we don't expect that there would be anything that is severe. But again, nobody knows for sure. But it's a typical builder's risk, developer's risk, you know, when they go forward. You know, typically, the bank is gonna want one in addition, and there's a condition in the draft decision that says do the 21E study, which, of course, we're happy to do.
And the last question I have is the number of parking spaces. What was that again?
We have four, four spaces that are garage spaces, and then 23 surface spaces, I believe, is what it is, unless, Matt, you see something else?
That's correct, 23 and the.
How does that relate to the possible number of cars per household?
Well, with 14 units, and I can't remember if we submitted anything on that from.
We're meeting the zoning requirement for parking. We're actually exceeding it. We're providing, it's 23 parking spaces are required per zoning. We're providing 23 parking lot spaces, not counting the four garage bays, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else?
I just had a quick question about the process. So what else? Is this site plan review needed after this? Or have you been there already?
No, because it, we have been there informally because it's 40B, which basically a comprehensive permit means we don't go formally to any other towns or review like a site plan review. You folks stand in the shoes of all of the other processes and, and departments and boards. That said, we met several times with staff and at least one, call it formal, informal, an actual meeting with all the staff members who would normally go to the formal site plan review and took their comments and worked with them. And likewise, they did a site visit with us as part of that process. So there is no further need to do that.
As I, as I see in the materials here, there's a letter from March of 2023 from the head of the planning department, you know, and at that point, she recommended that this project was not necessarily, you know, gonna fit within the parameters of what was designed for by the town. Has staff changed their opinion on that? And I see Jim's here, if.
Yeah, Jim can certainly speak to it, but the current, and I believe all the interim reports don't raise concerns about that. I, without going back to that initial one from a year ago that you cited, I presume that they were basically pointing out that, you know, it's 40B, which is why we don't comply with the existing zoning, you know, which is a single-family area, you know, to oversimplify it. But I certainly don't see anything in any of the staff reports that raised other concerns. And of course, you know, if you'd like Jim to answer, that's fine.
If, if that's okay, yeah. You mind?
Not a problem at all. Jim Kupfer, Assistant Director of Planning and Development. What Attorney Freeman remarked was, was fairly accurate. We did have a site visit as, that's the initial step for any comprehensive permit 40B that is submitted to a town. They sought site eligibility. We met with Mass, Mass Housing out on site and reviewed with all the applicable departments. I've, I served as coordinator for that and took in all comments from different departments. And yes, that letter, initial letter highlighted all the deficiencies in terms of local zoning that was in place. And we've asked that the applicant seek to meet the standards where they can. As you guys know, this is, again, a 40B where, you know, because we're not at our, our 10% affordable housing requirement, there are opportunities for the applicant to not meet local standards, but they do need to meet state standards. And at that time is the time where we highlight all the local standards that we would like for them to consider when, when applying. And they, I know they have tweaked that plan since that time to try and meet as many of the local standards as they, as they can.
Excuse, just one question before you leave there. So is the town's stance at this point, are we looking more of a, is this like a friendly 40B project at this point?
Right, so it's not officially a friendly 40B. Friendly 40B has to go through a certain channel, and it would be signed off by the town manager prior to coming to the zoning board of appeals. So this isn't a friendly 40B in the, the technical term, but, you know, the, I will say that the applicant has gone through the site plan review process, all the departments, including fire, police, DPW, building, et cetera. And we, you know, we've offered our comments and they've made the requested adjustments to the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, while we have it.
Not going anywhere.
It's actually a point I wanted to ask of the applicant, because in the staff report, the last reference to a meeting with town here is November 2022. Now, you've seen, you've now mentioned that there've been subsequent discussions and meetings and so on. Just for the record, it would be useful, I know you've had interactions with the Board of Health. Are there other departments? And Jim, it sounds like you've been coordinating, playing quarterback for this. Can you just tell us who's, who's been at the table, what conversations have had, and what's the position of the town on this?
Sure, I could try and do a recap. It has been kind of a lengthy process, as you can tell. So for any 40B, our initial kind of notice that a 40B is being prepared and brought to the town is typically, an applicant may give us notice that, hey, we, we are looking for site eligibility, but typically it then comes from the state. We get an official letter from the state that says, we've received an application for site eligibility, we would like to schedule a time to meet. So that occurred, and so typically, when that, that does occur, Planning Department does kind of coordinate that, and the Planning Department reached out to the, the Fire District, Water District, Board of Health, DPW. I know, trying to think of other departments that were at the site walk. That, that might have been it for the site walk itself. From there, we, we, we have, we met on site to talk about the, the logistics. At that time, it was a rough conceptual design, so not, not to this degree. From there, there was a request from Planning Department, from all the boards, whether you were at site walk, or not boards, but departments, whether you're at site walk or not, please review the request and offer comments. That's how that initial letter was formulated, and we issued that back to Mr. Busby. After that time, Mr. Busby and his team reviews the request. Ultimately, it was deemed site eligible. And at that point, the applicant has an opportunity to then apply for this specific comprehensive permit. That permit was filed, and prior to coming to zoning board, I believe it was prior to coming to zoning board, we met for informal site plan review, which is, some of you might be more familiar with a tech review meeting. So it was the application that's mostly before you tonight. And again, sitting down with all the different departments, the, all the departments that I have already mentioned, and we go over, you know, some of the deficiencies that we do see, anything, you know, any strict request from zoning or such as Board of Health regulations, we highlight those and say, you know, we understand this is a comprehensive permit. You don't necessarily need to meet the local standards. However, you know, it is, if we're working together on this collaboratively, we'd like for you to meet the standards as, as much as possible. So all those departments did chime in, and I believe there was a site plan review letter as part of the, the application that was, that was provided back to the applicant. At that time, they amended the, the application and then presented to this board last November, I believe it was. From November, based on the comments that were provided from the board and, and the public, we reached out to the Board of Health for further guidance, because again, this is, as Attorney Freeman mentioned, this is a comprehensive permit, so this is the board that will review for, for all parties, for the town. But in Mass General Law for 40Bs, the board can reach out to different parties to get guidance, and Board of Health was an obvious request here based on the, the ask. And so since that time, Board of Health Chair and the Board of Health Agent provided feedback and is what is in your app, your file for consideration. And further, their comments were provided to Planning, who then put language in your staff report for potential findings and conditions for consideration. I think that's the timeline?
I don't wanna keep you on the hot seat, but.
No?
I have a question.
Yeah.
A, a follow-up. So you're right in that the, the, the regulations permit us to make increases, increase of these various departments. It sounds like you've played that role to a certain extent in terms of coordinating and getting input. So, and, and this is a hard question, but I, I know there were issues that were raised in, to which the applicant were made aware. In your, is it your sense that, even though it's not a friendly 40B, that they've advanced, they've sought to address the issues that were raised?
Right, so, so I would say for the balance of the issues, yes. They, they certainly have, there's some obvious deficiencies in our, in our zoning, such as this is, I believe, a two-acre, single-family zoning district. So that's, you know, clearly not something that's gonna be met to our local zoning. However, things like sightline, things like dark sky compliant lighting, things like meeting the parking requirement, things like stormwater have all been addressed and, and meet the standards. It's, it's some more of the, the high-level things, like the, the very clear density requirements.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question. This is a little conceptual, maybe, but, and I just thought of it, so. Would this, say this was approved, would this be opening up the floodgates for comprehensive permits left and right, or?
So, so at this time, as long as any community in the Commonwealth that doesn't have 10% affordable housing, the, an application can be made for a comprehensive permit. Bonestables, that's 6.78%, we're about 770 plus or minus units away from 10%. So at any point, a comprehensive permit could be filed. There are a number of limiting factors that, of why comprehensive permits are or are not applied for, especially, you know, on the Cape, it's, you know, the cost of construction and all that. There are some, some limiting factors, but, but I would say simply your consideration of this application would not be opening up the floodgates. It's there for consideration by anybody if they, they so chose.
Yeah, I've been on the board for 10 years, and this is the first one.
Yeah, I've been on the board for 10 years and this is the first one, so.
Yeah, there's, I believe there's only been one other considered in the, maybe, maybe 10 years and maybe a little bit less, but, but I mean, other communities have had to grapple with this quite often.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else?
One last one. I apologize. So I know that one of the standards is reaching the 10%, but there's another one that is making, the language might be substantial progress still.
Yep.
Has the town been granted that lower certification?
Right, so there's a couple, there's, yes, it's not as black and white as 10%, right? So there, there's another metric, actually, I believe it's 1.5% of our land area, which we're not, we're not close to. But there are subsequent standards for certification and what they call safe harbor. So if we're making progress towards developing affordable housing there, if we make 1% of development, affordable housing and, and, or 3% development affordable, 3% can potentially, and I say potentially because there's other steps you got to take, 3% could potentially give you up to two years of safe harbor, as long as you're progressing towards the construction of those units. 1% could give you potentially up to one year of safe harbor, again, if you're progressing towards actually constructing those units. Secondarily, you'd need a housing production plan, which the town is actively working on right now. That housing production plan then needs to be certified by our local council and the state. So that's, that's actively being worked on as we speak. And then the progress of 1 and 3%, I could, I could report back to the board. I'm not, I don't have those numbers readily available at the moment.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a question for the appellant, or applicant, really. Let's see, just, we were talking about monitoring the septic before, there's other little things like the no phosphorus and fertilizer and things like that. How does that, how do you keep a landscaper from using fertilizer with no phosphorus?
I'll let Matt answer, but it, it is easily done by the management of the company. They will not allow that if that's a consideration or a condition. I don't know if the permitting itself, Matt, for this type of a system would forbid that, but it's a type of condition that I don't think we'd find objectionable.
Yeah, well, I think it's more, you're talking about more fertilizer use on lawns and landscaping, so that's really, would be a condition that you'd put in the permit and then that has to be monitored as well that the.
Yeah, it's in there, seems like it's part of the whole keeping the nitrogen down.
Yeah, right, so any landscape company has to meet those criteria and then they, you know, it could be where they provide a, you know, maybe an annual report or something if, you know, here's what we use.
You're probably not going to use some guy with one pickup truck landscaping company, so they're probably going to, you know, be on the scale that they have that kind of thing available. And the other question is also to you. So have, do you have a good idea that there's very little chance of contaminant, contaminants being in the soil, or?
As far as the 21E?
Yeah, I mean, you know, because there were complaints.
I would say my, my gut is, to be honest with you, is in the area of development, and that's where the 21E, it's only going to be where we disturb the ground. That's where the 21E is going to, going to be done. I don't think there's anything there. We did perk tests, we did four perk tests out kind of, you know, past the cul-de-sac here, so to the north, there was nothing. Now, again, those are only spot holes, right? But there is nothing found, the soils were all fine, all, all natural. And if you look at the topography, if there was anything, I think there's, it's, you'll see some contours where this kind of looks like a little pyramid, a little spiral up. And they're to the north and they're in the eversores season. And if there is anything, I think that's maybe where it is. And it's well away from this, but I, you know, that's my.
Okay, yeah, because I, I just assumed that if you thought there was a problem, you would have looked into it.
Yeah, no, yeah, I mean, I'm, to be honest with you, I'm going to be surprised if anything's found in this area.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we left public comment open last time, I believe, so I would like to now open public comment. Anybody from the public like to speak? Oh, I'm surprised. There were a number of letters last time, I think we entered those all into. Are there any new ones? I looked through them the other day and I didn't see any that were new. Okay, so, all right, I'll move to close public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, board discussion. Let's see. Anybody have any further concerns that weren't brought up before?
The only concern I have is the 21E, you know, and finding something in the soil. I, I, you know, I mean, it was very good ex, you know, explanation, I appreciate that, but, you know, I'm just wondering if you wanted to, do test borings early, you know, before you even put a shovel in the ground.
Well, that was my question to Matt and I think he answered it pretty well. And don't forget what he said about if, if it's in an area that is not going to be disturbed by the project, then it really isn't a concern. I don't quite know how to put that.
We, we had all the letters and all the comments before, you know. Now, why people aren't making those comments now, I don't know, you know?
Yeah, I'm surprised there's nobody here from the public.
Right, but you know, so I just want to feel that we've, we've addressed their concerns.
Oh, me too, absolutely. Did you have a?
Well, I was just going to say, on the 21E, I think the condition reads that has to be done prior to the building permit being issued, so there would be no construction started. You do the investigation, it's got to show that it's clean and that's got to be given to the town prior to being able, the town, the building department being able to issue a building permit, so.
I believe if there, if there's financing involved, I'm not saying there is or not, they, that is a requirement that they do then, they start with the database and they work from there on the site. But it does, you know, what may happen is if they do find something, it could be something like a strip and remove, there's several options to, you know, that would, you know, bring it within compliance.
And do you have a licensed site professional in your staff in the event that?
I don't have it in my office, but an LSP would be hired for this project, absolutely.
And I just stepped up to say, it is exactly as Matt said, it's condition 12, proposed draft condition 12, which also mentions the licensed site professional.
So I'd just like to go on record, I don't really like this project, I got to be honest. The density concerns me greatly, given the fact that it's, you know, where it is in the zoning that's been laid out by the town. It seems to be a lot in a small space.
It's actually only three and a half units per acre.
Yeah, but a little over three units per acre. And it is exceeding the zoning, but that's why we have an affordable housing crisis, whether it's here or anywhere else. And, you know, Barnstable has been good about affordable housing and proactive.
I get it, I, I get it, I just.
No, I understand.
Yeah, I just feel like, again, given the fact that it's, it's placed where it is, to me, it's, 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 again, it's, it's, I appreciate the need, I truly do, I just, it's, I struggle with it being right where it is. It's Old Stage Road, it's, it's, can't be anymore.
There is actually, it's in.
Yeah, the Housing Authority actually has a.
Another 40B that's kind of just, you know, as the crow flies, it's probably a quarter of a mile from here.
It's about a quarter of a mile, the Housing Authority actually.
Well, like I said, I, I, that's all information that I was unaware of, so I appreciate that for sure. I, I get it, I, I do, it's, I worry about the concerns, the public comment, you know, has not been necessarily in favor, of course, right? There's, you know, we have, I don't know, 15, 18 letters in opposition, 12 to 15, whatever number it is. So I, I worry about that for sure.
I think a bunch of them were from the same person, but it doesn't change it.
I don't know, that's, I saw the one from Gene Remmers, who's been on quite often, you know?
Sorry, I, we were mistaken, there were follow-up letters from Ms. Remmers that were not read into public comment at the last meeting. So if you could reopen and then I can tell you which letters they are in laser fish, or if you want me to read the name and date, I'm happy to.
Sure.
So Mr. Chair, just.
Let's see, well, public comment is closed, though, so.
You can reopen it and then read the letter, the recent letter.
Okay.
Please.
Need a motion to reopen, or?
Yes.
Yes.
I make a motion to reopen public comment. Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Find those letters. Yeah, the, let's see, this doesn't give them by date, so you must have them in the same order that I do, right?
Yes, I do, I just went through them, so I have them open if you, it's, this one is titled, Public Comment 2 from Remmers in Opposition, Public Comment 3 from Remmers in Opposition, Public Comment from Vigno in Opposition. And Public Comment from Way and Remmers in Opposition. Those are after the last meeting.
Okay, all I really need to do is give the date and I don't need to read it verbatim, correct?
If you could read the, the date and who sent it and if it's in opposition and you could, you could do a some, a quick summary.
Yep. Okay, so from December 11th, 2023, follow-up letter regarding 900 Old Stage Road Plan Development Appeals, 2023-034. This is citing golf course permits, enclosed passageway. There's a, a number of, anybody else is looking at this? I could read the whole thing, maybe I just should.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about it.
Thank you. And this is from, I'm using my little touchpad here, so. And that was December 11th and it's from Mr. and Mrs. John and Gene Remmers. Okay. The next one is public comment, 3 from Remmers.
They're opposed, right?
And they are opposed. Okay, I'm waiting for this to load.
This is number three?
Yes. Okay, thanks. Okay, so that's received January 17th, 24. And this is also just stating there, you know, some details about their opposition. So, and this one's from, oh, this was submitted by Remmer for Dr. Jonathan Way. That's number three, eh?
They are in opposition.
Yes. And what I have here from January 9th also, it's to Town Manager Alz. Yeah, it's basically that letter, but. Okay, onward and upward. And then there was Vigno. And that is an email dated December 5th.
Yep.
And opposition. And that discussed wildlife. And that was James and Patricia Vigno. And lastly, then we do have one from Way and Remmers. And that's an email dated December 6th, 2023. And. This discusses animals' use of wildlife corridor. And it was submitted by Jack and Gene Remmers in behalf of Dr. Way. So those are the additional.
Also in opposition.
In opposition, yes. For the animals. And I would move now to close public comment again.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will just.
Just one quick question, was there at any point any required survey, not environmental survey, but more from conservation? Sometimes they'll do a, of that area, nothing required, nothing suggested?
There's no mapped habitat, there's no, yeah, there's no resource.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll continue with board deliberation, or?
I guess, does anybody else have any thoughts? Are we all in favor?
Well, I had more opposition to it before the abutters didn't show up, but also, you know, if you look at the satellite view and how many houses, and they're all undersized lots to begin with by today's standards, and if you look at how many, the density there, this is very.
We could not get on Zoom.
Oh.
We've been here because of this meeting. We'd like to be heard.
Oh, okay, I'm going to open public comment again, but let me finish what I was saying. If, if you look at the density, this is a drop in the bucket compared to how many houses are clustered between Route 28 and Old Stage Road. And Old Stage Road and whatever other road you want to say, shoot Flying Hill Road. My main concern is for the abutters. I don't really see problems with traffic or even the pedestrian crosswalk that's proposed, anything like that, but it's, you know, if you can satisfy the abutters as far as, you know, fences or anything else, that the lighting is helpful. My other objection really is to the fact that it's renters as opposed to owners in the case of condominiums.
Yeah, I just, I mean, at one point, I know that the town was limiting property owners in that area from adding on to bedrooms because of the sensitivity to the groundwater and so forth. And, you know, again, I just, to me, there's clearly an issue. I understand that Tom McKean and, and the head of the Board of Health have responded in favor to the proposed additional, you know, you know, septic system that's, that's been proposed now and appreciate that for sure, 100%. It's, I just, again, had, if I was a property owner in there and had been denied my ability to add on to my own home because of the sensitivity to the water and then have 14 or three new buildings being built next door, I would be miffed, to say the least. So, yeah, I don't, again, I struggle with that. I just feel, I under, again, I get all the factors why, you know, that we're here and in this predicament that we are across the board. It's just this area, to me, seems to be, as you just said, heavily, you know, the density is gigantic already, so, and I understand it's a drop in the bucket in reality, but I don't know, I just, I struggle with it for sure.
I do, people have been there for 20 years as homeowners.
Want to put a bedroom on and been told they couldn't because of the sensitivity to the water. So, you know, are they now free to do that, I wonder? I don't know. I mean, I, you know, that would be a question I would like to, to pose to, to health. If I owned a home and it was a three-bedroom and I want to upgrade to a four-bedroom and add, and, you know, maybe a, a different system, I'm not sure, but I guess, you know, that would be hard to argue against. And maybe it wouldn't be if the system was, was brought up to a more current snuff, I don't know.
I think if people are going to say, and this is probably not germane, but if they're going to say add another bedroom, now they're looking at redoing the septic too and everything, where what they're doing is a brand-new.
Oh, I get it.
Innovative system.
Yep.
So they are addressing that question.
Yep, I, yep.
Yeah, it's a tough one because housing's needed, you know, and the times are changing, you know? The big problem is overpopulation and we're not here to really discuss that. Let's see, so I'm going to move to open, oh, go ahead.
Just if, if I could make a, just a quick comment here, I think, you know, again, to, you know, to sort of highlight the idea that these new AI systems, I mean, they really do make an attempt at, you know, sort of quelling the worries of, of the abutters. And, and I think what's happening right now and as a general broad topic across the town is that housing cannot be centralized solely in Hyannis. It has to be shared by the towns. It's an uncomfortable conversation, we understand that. I understand more, maybe somebody doesn't like having a short-term rental next to their house, I understand that. I understand that these projects can be scary on the surface, but I think because they are under a microscope, I think that we are better able to address. I can assure you that probably 30 to 40% of the homes that sit within an abutting range that sit within an abutting range of this property probably have failed septics. I can guarantee you if they were to be, you know, monitored, that there'd be a whole lot of people spending a whole lot of money. And so I think that this is a conversation that will be coming more often. I think that the ability to really get an eye on these projects, for us to be able to ask the pertinent questions. Are we, are we, you know, servicing the abutters? Are we, are we meeting their concerns, you know, things like that? And I think this is a great way to do it. Again, can be a little bit scary, but I think this is a conversation that is going to be had across all towns that are within Barnstable because we do require the housing. Renters are going to become a larger portion of the population. Homeownership is just not within reach. And these are people who are engineers, they are nurses, they are teachers. You know, these are the people that we have to accommodate. And I think this is a project that is making a, by, you know, speaking with planning, that they are at least willing to entertain entertain the concerns that the town has. So that's sort of my feeling on that as more of a general thought, but with regard to this project.
Okay, we'll bring it back for deliberations after public hearings close, but. Oh, no, that was probably the best thing that's been said all night. Very good. So what I'd like to do is reopen public hearing, public comments again, and.
I'll move, but we open public comment.
I will second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it looks like we have two members of the public here.
Hi, Mary Lynch, 28, Patriot Way in Centerville. I'm not a direct abutter, but I live right across the street. I'm only a couple of houses down from Old Stage Road. I've lived there since 1987. I'm a nurse. I own my home. You're not going to find nurses and doctors and engineers coming to Cape Cod and living in a 14-unit building off of Old Stage Road. I can tell you that right now. One of the things when we moved down here, they made one-acre units for housing. And what was it for? Water. Never mind your sewer. I know we've got sewer problems, and we're working on that. We've got a water problem. We've got water quality. We know that with all the PFAS in the water. And we need to start thinking about that. We're building these huge things on Oak Street. God help, help us if those things ever cause a problem to our water supply. I've grown my family up here. I've got three children. Two of them can't even find their own way to get a house around here. They're working as laborers, electricians, you know, heating installers. I've got a daughter who's a teacher in Harwich, lives in Barnstable, struggling to, you know, keep things going and keep her house going. It's just, you don't care about the people that are here. And, and all these immigrants coming in. I know we need workers, but there's people here that can work. And we need to start thinking about them. All these huge buildings you've put up, all down in Addicts Way, Independence, huge things. And how many affordable housing units did you put there? You should have required a heck of a lot more for these huge buildings going in. So don't ruin my neighborhood with rentals. If you wanted to put condos in there, I'd be all for it. But don't put rentals in there. Someone making a lot of money off of everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. And is that all?
I'm Jean Remmers at 97 Outpost Lane, Centerville. I have been there 48 years. I have written, my husband and I have written three of the letters. Plus, we've been in contact with Mr. Jonathan or Dr. Jonathan Wei. I don't really know where to begin and to do it politely, quickly. I would suggest rereading all of the letters that we have written. When we built our house 48 years ago, it was completely wooded where Patriot Way is. We were told no one could ever build there. Hence, Patriot Way is now there. I don't recall the gentleman's name who said it will not impact traffic. I strongly disagree. Anyone that has seen the growth in that area, there's over 500 homes between, up and down Old Stage Road, off to the Service Road. Please don't tell me it will not impact traffic. I could go on for hours. We were the ones that noticed back in the 80s in the hotels. They dumped their material there. It is buried there. If people don't believe us, feel free to dig up the whole 3.9 acres and see what you find. The other thing is, come to my house, look out my dining room window. When J. Craig Maderis dumped all the debris there, that land was flat. We now have a big mound of dirt that has remained there for years. And again, I could go on for hours, but please kindly read the letters. And I don't mind if they want to build a house or two in that area, but we don't need story buildings up. We're all residential, we're all one-family houses. Again, we couldn't add on because of the water situation and the soil situation. And I don't know what else I can tell you, but kindly reread the letters and take that into consideration.
Yeah, I've read, I've read them all within the last couple of days, actually.
And did you find anything? I, I have a couple of concerns. First of all, tonight's meeting, we've been doing it by Zoom. We weren't notified that this would be in person. We would have arrived earlier and on time. I think that's not very polite. I wrote a registered letter to several people. I've never gotten a registered letter response to anything that I've written. Some of the people are present here that I wrote a registered letter to. I think that's just common courtesy to acknowledge that. You have any questions for me? I'll feel free to answer them.
I can't think of any.
Our neighborhood does also have some affordable housing at the end of the other street, a quarter of a mile away. Those were done, again, not as a high-rise, but smaller. If you want to put in a single-family house or a couple of single-family houses, that would blend in with the neighborhood nicely, but not to have a massive building. Any questions?
Nope, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you'd like to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members.
Is this still public comment? I think it's responding to, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and public comment is also different than our presentation, but either way, it's fine. Thank you. Again, for the record, Peter Freeman, representing the applicant. So I always respect and listen to neighbors, as I just heard here. I actually think that several points actually speak in favor of the project, although I know that wasn't their intention. But there's been several references, including by both speakers, about the size and it's bad for the neighborhood. They're two stories. They're nothing like the large project buildings. I have no comment on the large projects one way or the other, but these really fit in with the area. Yes, they're more, they're more than what would be there ordinarily.
Could you show her? I think she's expecting something like on Independence Park.
We've looked at the materials. We're informed.
I'm not getting into a debate. I respect your, your position. But in any case, I just think it's important for the board to remember that, and it would be appropriate to, you know, refer to these as they are referenced in the list of materials. That's point number one. Point number two, you know, there, how can I say this? You know, there are considerations in terms of renters versus owners. One of them is both the state and federal fair housing law. And, you know, the, the agency, in this case, Massachusetts Housing, Mass Housing, Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency, they have given the approval, their eligibility approval for a rental project. And that is basically the law of the land in terms of, you know, what you're reviewing. And I would also just end for the moment with this. You know, the town's housing plan for the last several years, another one being redone, et cetera, updated. It clearly calls for rental housing, not exclusively. All types of housing are needed. But it does certainly bless the need for rental housing. And in fact, the other thing about the larger projects that was referred to, really on par with what Mr. Hanson said, that's why this is a good location. It doesn't overwhelm, and it does spread things out so that it's not all in Hyannis. And that's another thing that the various housing plans and comprehensive plans over the years basically urge that the housing be spread out, the denser housing. So I'll end with that for now.
Well, I have a question. Looking at the plan here, is that one building shown down on the bottom of the sketch, is that the only building, residential building that's within the scope of that drawing? Or is that a residential dwelling?
Are you talking about an abutting property?
Yeah, that little square down below.
I'm not sure where you're talking about.
Yeah, Matt, I'm not sure if you can tell.
Down below that.
Down here?
Below the property line, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, I think that's a shed. Here, let me go. I'm not seeing the pointer here, there it is.
Oh, there we go.
Yes, this helps you see it a little bit better. Here's, and this is based on what you're seeing here. These are the homes, and this is based on GIS information, right? Not survey information. But those are the homes here, you have homes over here. This is the swath of the ever-source electric easement here. You know, so again, you know, understanding that, you know, from a density standpoint, it's at three and a half units per acre, which is actually not that dense. Understanding what the, you know, parent zoning district is of, you know, one acre or two-acre zoning. But as we all know, you know, direction that things are moving, two-acre zoning, that creates a sprawl. It doesn't, it's been shown that this doesn't work. And that's, you know, 20, 30 years, you know, old thinking.
Yeah, when it went up to two-acre zoning, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, so if you look at this lot, though, I mean, all of this, granted, it's ever-source easement, but it's still, it's open space, it's habitat. The critters love the ever-source areas as far as, you know, cleared areas with wooded areas and so forth. And if you're looking at the back half of this project is remaining as it is, undeveloped. So just wanted to point those two things out.
And just one other thing that that brings to mind, you know, it does, incrementally, it does help the town get to the 10% goal or even those interim standards. Because unlike a for-sale project, rental projects, all 14 units, will count towards a subsidized housing inventory. And, you know, again, as, as I think several of you have said, or most recently, Mr. Hanson, you know, it is a challenge. We all love and value the Cape and our town and, you know, how it looks and all of that. But on the other hand, you know, is it better to have a few spread-out, smaller projects than many of the huge ones? I don't take a position on that because I'm here for one particular project now. But there is a lot of thought to the idea that let's try to get to that 10% or the interim yearly goals by having projects like this. So, you know, happy to answer any more questions.
I couldn't remember from the last hearing, and I didn't come across it in my recent review. What were you doing for screening and fencing along especially that, I guess, easterly side?
Yeah, let me go down to the, let this thing load here. Takes a moment.
Yeah. Unless there's anybody else from the public who wants to speak, I'm going to move to close public comment.
I will second.
All in favor?
Yes. Aye. It's closed.
We just closed public comment.
Just all right to ask a question? I'm not sure that I understand. If the whole acreage there is 3-point-something acres, how much is being used for the housing?
I'll ask for you. How much of the 3.8 acres is?
I don't know off the top of my head. I mean, we look at, you know, from a density standpoint, you look at the lot area. Lot area, number of units, about about a lot area. So I don't know off the top of my head, but, you know, if I had to guess, I'd say it's probably.
Yeah, about half, maybe, a little bit under.
Yeah, about half.
So half of 3-point-something is going to have the hoses on it. As I understand, as an abutter and living there for 48 years, we cannot build underneath the power easement or 70 feet on either side of the power easement. Is that correct?
You cannot build inside of the ever-source electric easement.
Right, and, and the site plan clearly shows that that's not.
Yeah, we, we closed public comment, so, sorry. But thank you. Okay, as far as the screening.
Yeah, so the landscape plan here, if you look, I mean, this line here represents the limit of clearing. So all of this area is going to remain wooded and undisturbed, okay? If you see what I'm pointing to here. And I don't know if it's easier, actually, let me try with my pointer. You might be able to see it better. You know, so all that area here is undisturbed. That's, that line align there, this is, again, undisturbed, but it gets narrow here. So we propose to enhance, and this would really kind of be a field fit, enhance the landscaping for infill to provide additional landscape screening. And then, you know, I believe that the owner, the applicant, would be willing to also, you know, install a screening fence, say like a six-foot solid fence along the property line on top of it. So you could have a, you know, you could have a fence along the property line. Then you have the landscaping put in in front of that fence to then even enhance, you know, both screening visually and, and sound aspect.
Yeah, the fence would help with sound.
I think that's something that, you know, would be entertained if a fence, if you would like to see a fence, a screening fence put in.
What do you think, Aaron?
You know, I.
Cause I'm on the fence like you are.
Yeah, and I, and again, I hate to bring up this last bit of public comment, but that's a very valid point here, is that you got a 3.1-acre parcel, if that's correct. I don't know exactly the parameters. And everything's jammed into the front half of it, correct? The back half is.
I would say it's yes, it's on the front half. It's not jammed in, though. I would agree with that.
If I could answer, and through the chair suggests that you ask Mr. Cupfer if he wants to comment on my comment.
All of the precepts of modern planning, land use planning, smart growth and everything else, say to do exactly what we're doing, to concentrate the development so that you do have more open space. So, in fact, that's what we followed. It's the current practice. There are all kinds of benefits. And so I would say that it's a positive. Thanks.
Thank you. Jim, anything to say with that? Larry?
Please.
There was a two-acre parcel broken off from this, correct?
Correct.
And is it shown on there, or is that just the property?
Yeah, let me show, I can show you on the, gotta get back to the beginning here. Stay with me. There we go. So this, this is the original lot prior to the two acres being carved off. The two acres is about here. That does, that, two acres is not part of this discussion. The 3.95 acres that we're talking about is just a lot of, and this, let me see if I can zoom in here. But this is the approved A&R plan. So you can see, here's the, the plans that have been submitted and the 3.9 acres that we're talking about and so forth is this area here. This is the two acres back here that was carved off as a single-family lot and sold separately. And again, just, you know, from what Mr. Freeman, Attorney Freeman, just said, you know, from a design, from a planning standpoint, I mean, you know, zoning ordinances, I mean, the direction of how planning is going, zoning ordinances allow, you know, this cluster development incentives, open space development incentives to, to cluster units and keep open space. And that's really what this is, is doing. But here's, just as an example, I mean, this right here, we talk about sprawl from a planning standpoint. Look at this lot. This is what we, we broke off to meet zoning for one single-family home, that entire two-acre parcel. You can't, you can't do that. If you do that everywhere, you, you know, one, you're not going to have any housing. Two, you, you, you just, you create that sprawl that, again, the planning aspect over the, you know, last, you know, Jim could probably say it better than I, but at least a couple of decades has been trying to move away from. And I know it's.
So is that, that two-acre piece currently? So is that, that two-acre piece currently has a house on it, or does not?
It's, it's under construction, I think.
It's already under construction?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But not by, you know, the applicant here, he doesn't own that lot. It's somebody else.
Just one thing I wanna clean up. At the last meeting, the attorney, we were looking at this drawing, and we talked about the lot that was split off, and it was highlighted with a yellow line, correct?
I can't, if I highlight it with a yellow, I'll say, okay.
My question is, to the left-
Larry.
Larry, you need to speak into your microphone.
It's on now, yeah.
That line is highlighted in yellow.
This line here?
Yeah, now move to the left.
Yeah.
That's square. All the way to the dialogue box there, right there. For some reason, that's yellow on this plan.
I don't know. What that dialogue box is?
Yeah, it's yellow.
I don't know why. It's just, that's, that's just a text box, is all that is.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't know.
If you went to the trouble to highlight the lot that was split off, why is that, you know, and it could be just a mistake.
Maybe it was just trying to highlight that this is the lot for the project?
Don't know. That's why I asked.
We're possibly getting to the end of where we wanna have public comment open, and then we can go back to deliberation. But does anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, it's closed.
Right, public comment, but the hearing, the hearing is still open. Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Then I would move to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in, yeah? Speak now.
Second on that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now we can come back for deliberation. I know Aaron is-
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm, you know, I appreciate what Mark said, I appreciate the project, I really truly do, I just, I can't, I feel like we're trying to squeeze this, you know, and I keep using these words, these adjectives, jam, squeeze, you know, in an area that I, and, and again, the zoning was, it might be antiquated, two-acre zoning, obviously, right? We're kind of beginning to learn that, trends are showing that that's the case. It doesn't change the fact that it's still within this area of high density where the zoning was originally, I don't even know what, probably one acre, and maybe not, I don't, you know, but it, it, I don't know, I just, I, you know, we're overriding our own town zoning ordinances, in essence, and again, I don't know how much wiggle room we have to stand on that.
That's a comprehensive permit.
Yep, I get it. So, you know, I'm not necessarily not in favor, I just, you know, I struggle.
You need to be kind of-
Yeah, I just, I don't think, I don't think it's a great spot. That's, that's my opinion for, you know.
We may be overriding our current zoning, but as everybody's demonstrated, that that zoning doesn't work anymore. You know, that zoning, you know, it's-
I get it, but that, our job isn't here to change zoning, our job is to uphold what is currently in place. That's my understanding of what we do here. Now, again, understanding that there's, you know, we are asked to go around those, those sort of designated boundaries at some point, and, and many times.
That's what you're asking.
Yeah, I, I get it, and so.
And this, this might bring some, some interesting perspective to what this project is versus, say, what we are seeing in Hyannis. We're seeing similar density projects happen in the Hyannis area that, that would encompass about one quarter, I believe. What is the total land of the three, three acres?
Yeah, it's 3.95.
3.9 acres. I mean, we're seeing density in projects that are actually about one-eighth of the size of this parcel. In comparison, I just wanna try to give the people that aren't as, aren't as involved as some, just some perspective on density versus size of the landmass. So in Hyannis, we might see a 14-unit project sit within half an acre, maybe a little bit more, three-quarters of an acre. Here, it's 14, 14 units over almost four acres. So just to lend some, just some perspective, that's all, not speaking one way or another.
Well, I have some thoughts. The reality is, we have a state law that mandates this. We are not, the town is not in compliance with the required level of affordable housing. There isn't one community on the Cape that's gonna welcome these with open arms. You can substitute the names. I, I think we're in a moment of change, and part of this is mandated. I think, I, I've read, I'm familiar with 40B applications, and we, we can choose to deny this, it's gonna be reversed by the Housing Appeals Committee, we would have wasted a lot of time, a lot of money, and a lot of effort. This is, we're at a point of inflection, unfortunately. To meet the requirement as stated in Massachusetts law, to get us to 10% affordable housing in this community, we're gonna have these conversations everywhere. It, no, no, it, it changes hard. And frankly, part of the reason I was putting Jim on the spot is to ask of, of the concerns raised by the town, how much has the applicant done to address them? And this may not be a friendly 40B, but the answer I got was that efforts have been made to, to, to address all these concerns. I, I appreciate the neighbors' comments, and, 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 you know, unfortunately, I think those comments will be replicated no matter where you put this. And, and I worry that, that while we're here to make sure that this is consistent with the local needs and, and consistent with the character of our town, because of where we are in terms of meeting those state requirements, we could choose to deny this, but we're delaying the inevitable.
Aaron?
I would agree, Manny. But I feel like that's, you know, unfortunately, in some ways, the road that we're, or what we're tasked with here is that it's sort of an inevitable piece. And I, again, it's, it's, yeah, I, you know, I feel like I've slightly been swayed in, in the direction of approval at this point. I, I appreciate it, I struggle, again, with the density factor, with the scope of the project. There are other areas amongst, not just in Hyannis, of course. Hyannis, although, is already built for, in some ways, some of this density with searing and, and so forth. You know, it's not, it does sit on a piece of land that is, is sensitive to our water source, is, is, so, but I, you know, I do feel like, in some ways, you know, as, as a board, we are not, I don't wanna say handcuffed, per se, but, you know, we are-
Well, you can, you can vote however you want.
Of course I can, I understand that, I believe me, I, I get it, I just, I, you know, is, does, yeah, anyway, so. I think we're ready to move ahead. I'm not gonna make the findings myself, but if somebody would so choose.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to remind you, the staff report is, has the current information, the findings and conditions. So if you get to that point-
Oh, not, not this, okay.
The staff report has the most recent information.
Okay, I was looking for the staff report in the laser fish, and I couldn't find it. What's it called?
The SR, it begins with SR.
23, the Bay Ridge.
Yeah, that's the most recent one. Oh, yeah.
I swear I don't have it.
No, it's right here.
12-page one, but that's the, right, the 13. Yeah, it doesn't go down any farther. This one. Yeah, I was looking for this just yesterday, and I couldn't, I was really surprised, I forgot to call you today. You have a printed-out copy of that?
The staff report?
Yeah. The one that has the current findings in it.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Okay.
Okay, cause I have, like, four pages of-
I think this is the revised.
Yeah, revised March 7th. Is this the revised March, March 7th?
Revised March 17th, April 4th.
And this one says April 10th, but-
There was a little tweet on today.
Oh, okay, I didn't get the tweet, but that's, so you're April 10th?
So, yeah, today was a little tweet.
What was that tweet?
It was, um, it was very old.
Yeah, I don't know. She's saying, she's saying there was a-
It's the last day of the session.
Okay, so, it is about two or three pages long, though, right? Okay. Cause that's what I was looking at here. All right. So I could make findings unless somebody else wants to.
We can share.
I-
We can share.
You wanna do findings, and I'll do conditions? If it gets that far.
Appreciate your patience, the YFM was very slow with these pads.
I can, I can start with the findings, if you'd like, move this along a little bit. I believe I have it in front of me.
Do you have the most recent?
Okay, right in front of me.
I-
April 10th.
Revised, it says revised March 7th, 2024, revised April 9th, revised April 10th. Okay, great. So, Bay Ridge Realty LLC has applied for a comprehensive permit pursuant to MGL Chapter 40B, Section 20-21, comma 22, and 23. The applicant proposes to construct 14 housing units, 24 bedrooms within four detached buildings and associated parking, and site improvements on 3.95 acres for rental purposes in accordance with MGL Chapter 40B, comma 760 CMR. The unit mix shall consist of six one-bedroom units, six two-bedroom units, and two three-bedroom units. Four of the units will be restricted as affordable for low or moderate income persons. The subject property is located at 900 Old Stage Road in Centerville, Massachusetts, as shown on Massachusetts Map 192 as Parcel 001, and is located in a Residence CRC zoning district. Oh, boy. I'm not sure where to move to now. Suggested findings?
My, my steward.
Okay. So, after considering the concerns raised by abutters and others during the course of the public hearing and reviewing the documents, plans, testimony, and other evidence submitted during the public hearing, the board makes the following determinations and findings. Are we good? Sorry. Okay, sorry. The applicant filed a Chapter 40B project eligibility/site plan approval application to mass housing, received a site approval project eligibility letter dated May 25th, 2023, allowing for no more than 14 rental units at the proposed site. In addition, the board finds that the applicant is limited dividend, or is, is a limited dividend organization, as per the mass housing eligibility letter and 760 CMR 556.04, parentheses 1, parentheses A. The project is fundable by a state subsidizing agency as per the mass housing eligibility letter and 760 CMR 56, parentheses 1, parentheses B, and the applicant controls the site as per the mass housing eligibility letter and 760 CMR 56.04, parentheses 1, parentheses C, and finding number four below.
You okay, Aaron?
I'm good, yep. You wanna take over? Can we split?
We'll split them, yeah.
Go ahead.
The site's largely undeveloped. The site has a 210-foot wide utility easement to the western portion of the property and a butt residential to the east. The site is in a Residence CRC zoning district.
I can't find it.
Bay Ridge Realty LLC has control over the site as evidenced by the submission of quitclaim deeds and purchase and sales agreements for each lot. See Book 34556, page 22, and Book 34589, page 95. The application's for 14 residential apartments. There are three buildings, each with four units, and one building with two units and four garages, along with associated amenities. The application proposes 10 market units and four affordable rental units for householder, households earning up to 80, that's supposed to be 80, right? 80% of the area AMI. The project will be served by public water and private septic as shown on the approved plan. Property is not to be further subdivided. The property is not within the 100-foot buffer of jurisdictional areas of the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, as defined by the Wetland Protection Act. The board finds that the town has not met the required housing goal of 10% affordable or low-income housing in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23, nor any other statutory or regulatory safe harbors, and therefore, accepted the application and reviewed the proposed project. The board finds that the site development plans shown, the locations and outlines of proposed buildings, the proposed locations, general dimensions, and materials for streets, drives, parking areas, walks, and paved areas, and proposed landscaping improvements in open areas within the site are in compliance with the Department of Housing and Community Development Regulations found at 760 CMR 56042. The board finds that the performance requirements of the Barnstable Zoning Ordinance, Article 9, Site Plan Review, have been met or a waiver has been requested and granted. The board finds that the stormwater management shown on the approved plan and associated drainage analysis has been designed to meet the stormwater management standards set by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. The standards include removing solids from the stormwater and reducing rates of runoff from the site. The board finds that the qualities of the natural environment were considered, and that there were discussions and plan revisions to preserve and/or mitigate impacts to the natural environment. The board finds that the applicant has cooperated with the board in the design of adequate landscape buffer through plantings and fence screening. The board finds that the illumination of the proposed lighting for the development, in accordance with the photometric plan provided, shall not trespass onto abutting properties. Any exterior building and street lighting shall be consistent with dark-skies standards, shielded and directed downward to maintain lighting onto the site. The board has determined through detailed analysis of the following documents that the project has adequate access. Turning template and site distance plans as shown on Sheet C3.2 and Sheet C3.3 of the site plans. These were submitted and approved through SPR.
Do you want me to pick it up? The findings for septic approval. Okay. Number 18. This project is in Centreville River watershed, which has been determined to be a nitrogen-sensitive area in the Massachusetts Estuaries Program, Project, rather, MEP, study in 2006, and in the town of Barnstable Saltwater Estuary Zone. The town's Department of Public Works, Department DPW, has determined that the town sewer will not be available for this area. Under the Town of Barnstable Code, Saltwater Estuary Regulation, Section B1, the maximum allowable number of bedrooms is 17, or one bedroom per 10,000 square feet, and the total wastewater flow allowed is 1,870 gallons per day, using a standard Title V septic system. This regulation, by variance provision, does allow a greater septic flow if certain standards are met. This project proposes to build 14 units with 24 bedrooms. The design flow of the wastewater is 2,640 gallons per day, GBD. The applicant has proposed using innovative alternative IA technology such as Nitrex System or equal to treat its wastewater to provide, produce, rather, an effluent that would be less than 10 milligrams per liter at the end of the pipe. This treatment technology is also known as best available nitrogen reduction technology under the latest Title V regulation, based on the design flow of 2,640 gallons per day for 24 bedrooms and the use of the- for 24 bedrooms and the use of the IA technology, the total nitrogen load for the proposed project could be 40% or less of the maximum allowable load using standard septic system. According to an email to Anna Brigham from Tom McKeen, the Barnstable Board of Health Director dated March 8, 2024, and referring to a septic system analysis in a letter dated March 8, 2024 from F.P. Lee, Tom PE, Vice Chair of the Barnstable Board of Health, and Mr. McKeon stated, therefore, based on this analysis, according to the Board of Health Vice Chairman Tom Lee, a 24-bedroom development could be allowed by the Board of Health if this project incorporates the best available nitrogen reduction technology at the site. The proposed innovative alternative IA technology shall be conditioned further herein. 19. The board finds that, as proposed, the project is inconsistent with certain local planning standards. However, the applicant has modified the proposal to meet the state standards and has cooperated with board to meet local standards to the maximum extent practical. The applicant has requested and hereby granted waivers to certain local ordinances. These waivers have potential to cause adverse impact, and as such, appropriate provisions are codified into the excuse me, Town of Barnstable local ordinances. Because the comprehensive permit process provides that the applicant need only ascribe to less protective state-level regulations, and even though these waivers have the potential to cause adverse local impacts, the board concluded to grant the following waivers and to find that the conditions imposed below sufficiently mitigate against any adverse impacts from the granting of waivers. The applicant has submitted a request for waivers from the General Ordinance Board of Health Regulations as follows: General Ordinances, Chapter 180 Scenic Roads, Chapter 3, 232, rather, Wastewater Discharge, Chapter 240 Zoning, and from the Board of Health Regulations, Chapter 60 Articles 10, Articles 13, Article 15. The above waivers were specifically defined during the hearing process. The board finds that the project is designed to meet local standards, where practicable, and therefore applicable requirements to the local zoning ordinance are hereby waived where not specifically granted above, only if such waiver is required to comply with the approved plans. The board finds that the conditions imposed in the following section are necessary in order to properly address the local concerns and mitigate impacts related to the construction and occupancy of the project. The board finds that such conditions will not render the project uneconomic. Those are the findings of the board. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will be in favor as kind of a surprise to myself. Anyway, okay, we have suggested conditions through the revision of today's date. I guess we should probably read these in as well, I would say. Who would like to pick it up from here? Mark would like to. It might be easier for you to read them. You want to read them from here?
No, I can get it here.
Based on the above determinations, the zoning board of appeal finds that the proposal meets the requirements of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40B, Subsections 20 to 23, and by a vote of
Five to nothing.
Five to none. In favor accordingly grants the applicant and its successors and assigns as owners of the premises a comprehensive permit with the conditions as set forth herein. Number one, this approval is limited to the improvements as noted on the approved plan and as may be conditioned herein. In the event the applicant seeks any change in the comprehensive permit after this decision is final, any such change must be presented to the Board of Approval for approval and for modification of this decision. Within 20 days, the board shall determine and notify the applicant whether it deems the change substantial or insubstantial with reference to the factors set forth at 760 CMR 56.074. If the change is determined to be insubstantial or if the board fails to notify the applicant by the end of such 20-day period, the comprehensive permit shall be deemed modified to incorporate the change. If during the public meeting the board deems a change to be substantial, then the board shall hold a subsequent public hearing within 30 days of its determination and issue a decision within 40 days of termination of the hearing, at which the board may approve or disapprove the requested modifications or amendments to this decision in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws 40B, Section 21, provisions of 760 CMR 56.0511. The board will determine whether additional information and advice is necessary from other boards and officials in the event of such substantial change, and will then determine whether the change or requested relief is to be approved and the decision amended accordingly. Quote substantial change, quote, "For the purpose of this paragraph shall include but not be limited to all matters defined as substantial changes in 760 CMR 56.074. If it deems necessary, the board may, at the applicant's expense, retain consultants to review and advise the board regarding to any proposed changes." Number two, no building permit shall be issued and no construction of any structure or infrastructure shall commence until the project receives final approval from the subsidizing agency and evidence of said approval is provided to the ZBA. Number three, the applicant has requested waivers from the zoning ordinance and from other applicable regulations. In review of the relief requested, the board found that certain waivers may be granted. In issuing of this permit, the board has waived compliance with the following sections of the code of the Town of Barnstable, see Exhibit A, attached here too and incorporated herein by reference. Number four, an affordable restriction and regulatory agreement in the form and substance as required by the subsidizing agency shall be signed with the subsidizing agency and shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Register of Deeds prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy. The applicant shall enter into a permanent restriction/regulatory agreement with the town in a form and substance reasonably accepted to the board and its council, the Town Regulatory Agreement known as, which shall be recorded with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds prior to issuance of any certificate of occupancy and signed by all necessary parties, including all mortgagees and lien holders of record, and shall be enforced in perpetuity. The Town Regulatory Agreement, one, shall only become effective if and when the regulatory agreement with the subsidizing agency is terminated, expires, or is otherwise no longer in effect, and is not replaced with another regulatory agreement with another subsidizing agency. Two, shall require that the project shall remain 25% affordable so long as the project does not conform to local zoning. Three, shall require that at least 20% of the units in the project shall be affordable as that term is defined in MGL Chapter 40B, Subsection 20 to 23. And four, shall restrict or limit the dividend or profit of the applicant only if and as required under MGL C40B and 760 CMR 56 at sequence, and no independent limitations on dividends or profits is imposed hereunder.
Excuse me, Mark?
Yes, please.
Sentence three, I, 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 I have 25%?
That's what I read here.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. I thought I heard 20%.
I'm sorry.
Okay, carry on.
Number five, as required by law and the subsidizing agency, the applicant shall be limited dividend organization and comply with the limited dividend requirements of MGL 40B, Subsection 20, and otherwise limit its profits as required under MGL C40B as determined by the subsidizing agency. And any excess profits shall be paid by the applicant and distributed or escrowed for reserves as required by the subsidizing agency, and in accordance with applicable law, regulations, and/or guidelines. Number six, this decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. This decision shall become effective upon recording. Proof of recording shall be forwarded to the ZBA and the Building Commissioner prior to issuance of a building permit or the start of construction. The decision permits the construction, use, and occupancy of a maximum of 14 rental units on the site and four garages in one building which also contains two of the residential units. The construction and occupancy of the project shall be in substantial conformity with the approved plan, and there shall be no further division or subdivision of the site or the creation of additional housing units or any other structures or infrastructure except that which is shown on the approved plan without further approval of the ZBA in the form of an amendment to the decision and pursuant to statutory requirements applicable at the time and in accordance with the terms and conditions of this decision. Number eight. I don't know why I'm having trouble with that word. Number eight, we can't make a motion to just approve these, I mean, but still, we got a whole nother page and a half to go. This is.
Two more pages. Can we reference the rest? I mean.
Please.
Condition.
For the sake of.
You can reference the rest.
Okay, that's fine.
Awesome. So I will make a motion to reference the rest of the conditions proposed as dated on staff report. To revise March 7, 2024, revised April 4, 2024, revised April 9, 2024, and a revised April 10, 2024. Attorney Freeman, have you had a chance to review these?
I have his copy right here.
Oh, well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, and we're fine with them. Thank you.
And I don't know what it says in here. I thought I had read it pretty thoroughly, but about fencing, I know it mentions in the findings, fencing and screening.
I don't know that there's a specific condition, but as Mr. Eddy Matt volunteered, if you want to add a condition.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to do that, please.
Fencing, that'd be 13. Oh, thank you.
If I may, Jim Cooper, Assistant Director of Planning and Development. When that comment came up, I started feverishly drafting a condition because it sounded like the board was interested in that, so if the board wishes to consider approving this project and accepting the conditions, I would recommend adding a condition if mutually agreed to. Add a six-foot solid wood privacy fence from the right-of-way of Old Stage Road to the ever-source easement along the eastern property line.
Would that make it 36 then, or does that put it into the septic? Does everything pass?
I think it would be number 13, I guess.
13?
Yeah.
Well, there already is a 13.
I mean, I think, yeah, that length of fence is reasonable. The only comment I would have is going all the way to Old Stage because there is that very, that front area that's going to remain very well wooded that I pointed out. Maybe it doesn't need to go all that way. And then also, could it be wood or PVC vinyl like we, you know, it's typically done today, you know, one or the other as far as material?
Okay. Do they have similar noise abatement qualities?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I guess my, I'd have a little concern is that we're not looking at the sheet anymore, but I guess there's enough of a wide enough buffer.
I could consider the PVC material.
Yeah, I don't like it.
Okay, we don't like PVC. Why?
I mean, it'll be there forever versus wood, which will need to be maintained.
Maintenance-wise too. It actually stays looking better. I know, but it's.
PVC's not in character.
Okay. And plus it cracks. Okay, so we're going to require wood.
Okay.
Is there some compromise between all the way to Old Stage Road and the edge of the new plantings?
Well, I think.
Because.
Let's see that. Can we just, yeah, he's pulling it up.
Yeah, I'm trying to get to the.
Clearly said, you know, that this, the wooded area up front and then from there back.
Yeah.
So maybe, yeah.
But it narrows down.
Yeah, no. Let me show you what I'm just thinking here, and I'm not going to really give you. Too far. There we go.
There it is.
Right, I mean, this, this is the area of existing woods that's going to remain, right? So this area is, you know, still significantly wooded, so I mean, a fence down here, you know, I don't think is really necessary.
Is that required to remain?
Like if you start right about, you know, with that area here.
I can't.
Yeah.
Is that reasonable?
Yeah. And it's a sightline thing with the houses too.
Yeah, yep. So if, you know, we started, you know, however you want to define that.
I assume those grade lines, those contours go up or down?
This is, this, this is lower than here, so it's actually, the topography actually helps with the screening as well.
Okay, good, good.
You know, if you want to kind of define that as, you know, the area to the, you know, southeast of building number, sorry here. Building number one.
Okay.
Where the clearing line starts to that southeast corner out to the property line. That's where the fence would start and run all the way to the ever-source easement. I think that makes sense.
Okay, and then I guess the developer can choose whether to put it along the property line or.
I'm sorry, start again.
The developer can decide whether to put it right along the property line or anywhere between that and the excavation.
Yeah, if you wanted, if you wanted, and, and a little bit from the property line.
Yeah, we don't have to.
Couldn't, couldn't you just scale that plan and then come up with a length of fence?
Well, I could. I mean, not right now though, but I mean, I could tomorrow.
Back in the office. All right. Okay, and that's 12A and.
13?
Well, there already is a 13.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Whoops. Yep, sorry.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so we have wording for that, Jim, and. Okay, so I'm going to move to accept the conditions as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. You have your comprehensive permit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for everyone's patience on that.
I don't know if, if anybody wants to take a little recess, but we've been here for so long.
Let's move.
We should really get out of here.
Yep.
Okay, no recess. Okay. I guess I have. I have Attorney Cohen's copy here, but, okay.
I lost my. I lost my paper agenda. Can I give it to you?
Okay. New business.
I give it to Herb.
Everybody? Do I have to get out the gavel?
Nope.
Okay. New business. Appeal number 2024-009. Case of Bun and Creeden. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Aren't too many variations. Brian M. Bun and Jennifer A. Creeden have petitioned for variance pursuant to Section 240-14E Bulk Regulations in the RC 1 and RF Residential Districts and Section 240-126 Variance Provisions. The petitioners seek to, seek a variance to the front and side yard setbacks requirements to build an accessory structure poolhouse in the northeast corner of their lot adjacent to their existing in-ground pool and existing walkway in Hartscape patio areas and retaining walls. The petitioners propose to reduce the front yard setback to 12.8 feet where 30 feet is required and the side yard setback to 7.7 feet where 15 feet is required. The subject property is located at 157 Papanesett Road, Gatewatt, Mass. As shown on Assessor's Map 109, rather, as parcel, boy, parcel 079. It is located in Residence RF, Residence F, RF zoning district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Dan Creeden. I'm an attorney with an office in Hyannis. I'm here on behalf of the applicants, Brian Bun and my cousin Jennifer Creeden. Mr. Bun is here with me this evening. I just asked for leave at the end of my comments for him to just be able to report to the board on some of the discussions he's had with his neighbors relative to his proposed project. This is, as Mr. Chair wrote into, read into the record, an application for a variance. Hopefully it'll be fairly innocuous compared to the last hearing. They are seeking a variance to vary the front and side yard setbacks to build a poolhouse to be used pertinent to their existing pool, which is located to the right rear of the property. The applicants bought the property in 2010. At that time, it was improved with a single-family house built in 1967 and an in-ground pool installed in its current location in 1989. The site, if you look at the site plan, it shows fairly conclusively, I would suggest, that the only place to locate a structure that's intended to be used for the purpose of a poolhouse is in that front right corner of the property. The difficulty arises with the. The difficulty arises with the location of it and some, uh, unique conditions that affect the property that don't affect, um, the neighborhood within which it's located. Uh, as the board is aware, under General Law's Chapter 48, Section 10, uh, there are three requirements that the applicant needs to show to, uh, support successfully a request for a variance, uh, and those are incorporated into our Section 240, 126 of our variance provision. Um, the first one is that the property is affected by unique conditions that are related to soil shape or topography, uh, that affects the locus and not the, the general district within which the property is located. In this case, looking again at the site plan, if, if I could draw the board's attention to the planter, uh, which is located immediately to the south of the proposed, uh, poolhouse, that planter represents about a, a three-and-a-half to four-foot grade change uh, that's retained by retainage wall around it that precludes the applicant from moving the, the proposed location back further. Also, uh, another topographical feature that's unique to the property, I would suggest, is the location of the pool itself, which is a depression in the ground, uh, and it does preclude them from complying with the front yard setback. Uh, and, and so the second condition that the applicant needs to show is that those conditions, owing to those conditions, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning ordinance by law when involved substantial hardship, financial, otherwise to the petitioner. In this case, if they were to comply with the, the setbacks, they would be faced with three, uh, hardship alternatives, one of which would be to, uh, sustain significant financial hardship to relocate the pool and regrade the property, uh, to move, uh, the building further back. Uh, the second would be to, would be to build a building that would not be utilizable by the applicants because it would render the depth of the building from front to back only six feet. Uh, and then the last of which would be to find some other location on the lot that, well, that otherwise complies with the setbacks, but that would render the, the building not utilizable for its purpose, which is a poolhouse, which I suggest has to be located in close proximity to the pool, because otherwise it defeats the purpose of actually building the building in the first place. The third requirement is that relief can be granted without, um, substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the, of the ordinance in this case. I'd suggest that public good isn't implicated. It's a very tasteful design. Uh, the, the applicants took, uh, care to work with a, an architect that borrowed design cues and, and architectural elements from the recent renovation of the Katuat Historic Society Building. Under the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance, I suggest that the overarching intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance is to balance property owners' rights to improve and use their property with the protective imperative to prevent land use that otherwise would have a significant negative impact on a butters and neighboring property owners. In this case, as circumstances would have it, across the street, which would be impacted, uh, most if, by a, a variance of the, of the front yard setback, there are no houses across the street. There's a very deep depression. It's all fernal pool, depressed wetland. Uh, I think three of the lots are actually owned by the Conservation Commission. Those are not going to be improved. They're not able to be improved, so no one will be impacted there. The lot most directly impacted, which is to the east, um, at 139 Papaneset Road, the house is actually located well back. It's a very deep lot, and the house is located, I estimated, 200 feet back from the street. So that sets up a situation where locating this structure closer to the street actually has less of an impact on that property that would be arguably the most directly impacted by the project. We know of no opposition of any of the neighbors to the project. Uh, Mr. Bun can speak about the conversations he's had with his neighbors. We have one letter in support from one of the neighbors to the rear on Jackson Drive. He will be happy to answer any question. We reviewed the staff report. The conditions are acceptable, and, and I just ask, if he could, the applicant to come up and just, just give a brief report to the board about his discussions with neighbors, if that's, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, now this isn't a, it says addition, poolhouse addition, but it's a standalone structure, right, so.
It is a standalone.
Okay. Uh, sure.
Uh, thanks for letting me speak tonight. Uh, as Attorney Creedon mentioned, I'm Brian Bun, the property owner, along with my wife. Uh, I did have a chance, um, over Easter weekend to talk to each of our, our direct neighbors, including the neighbor to the east, who was fine with it. Um, he was supportive of the plan and had no issues. We walked through the plan with him, what it would look like, what the impact would potentially be on the neighborhood, and he was fine with it. Um, as well as the neighbor to our west. Um, he was also fine with it, had a good chance to talk him through it as well, answer his questions, and then finally, our neighbor to the south, uh, the one that submitted the letter of support, he was also obviously in support of it. And as Attorney Creedon mentioned, that there are no neighbors to the north because of the, of the wetlands there.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Is this poolhouse meant to house equipment for the pool? Is the poolhouse meant to house the equipment for the pool? What is the floor?
Uh, just for use of people in there, though, the, um, place to, for people to sit. Oh, sorry, yeah. It's, it's not for the equipment.
Been put for storage of other pool materials, you know, floats and things like that. There'll likely be a little couch in there for people to hang out in and, uh, a little, um, a sink, uh, for people to, to wash up and, and go to the bathroom in there as well.
Excuse me, Anna. Would you like to show, um, the, um, elevations? Okay, thank you.
So, uh, one, one of the things we were just discussing quickly was, uh, with the second floor, understand that obviously it's an open concept. Uh, there is a full bathroom up there. Obviously, it could be some type of gym, playroom, whatever. Um, one of the things that we may, uh, consider is to add a condition, um, to the current conditions that the, uh, that it not be used for habitation. And we just wanted to be clear. If there's any change with that, obviously you can come back to the board.
That's entirely acceptable.
Okay.
And I had a question. This is not an insignificant ask, right? The, 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 the setback is 30 feet, and you're proposing to move it to 12.8. And, and I think, the question I had was a comment you made that the applicant considered moving it, or making the property less wide, if I can use that term, but it would render it only six foot deep? I'm, I'm looking, if we would put the site plan up. Trying to understand what that means.
So it's front yard setback, here, of 30 feet. So what would happen is bring it back to, here, so that little section right there? All that would be left if they were to go by.
Full 30, no, I get it.
So the 30-foot setback isn't shown on the site plan, but the limiting factor being the location of the planter, which is.
Yep.
Approaches the proposed building most closely. If you built to that limitation and you adhere to the 30-foot setback, your resulting structure would be six feet deep. Yeah, and you, you wouldn't be able to use it for anything.
Very quick question. Um, what, what is the planter? What is that?
Well, there's just, um, it's a change in grade. It's a topographical feature that's been, that has to be retained with retainage, with, with, I think, five courses of retaining, six-by-six retaining wall. And then on top of it, there's just a planted area, so the engineer called it a planter. But it's really, it, it's, I, I don't believe that it's entirely closed in the back. I think it sort of holds this interior bank in place that has then rhododendrons and things like that planted in it.
I didn't see the grade change below it. I was, I was just curious what it was. Thank you.
That's our topographical feature, which is our condition that affects the, the locus, but not the, not the neighborhood in general. That's, supports our 48, Section 10 findings.
You referenced the letter in support. I don't think we have it.
I have some copies here. Um, it's from, uh, Frank in Zarillo. He's at, um, 18 Jackson Drive. He emailed it in today, but I don't know, I didn't pay attention to which email he sent it to, but I could pass these up.
For the record, yep.
Do we have a copy?
We don't, actually. Thanks, John. Just for the record. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, that isn't five pages long though, right?
It's a sentence, I think.
The poolhouse. And then you've got something in front of it, then you have a problem. Is that? Thank you, I'm sorry. The, the way I'm looking at it, and I'm looking at the site plan, not the elevation, is you've got a poolhouse, then you've got, I don't know what it is in front of it, the square that was, tells you what the subfloor is, and then there's a bulkhead after that. Is that how this is going to be built? Am I, am I interpreting it right?
So the bulkhead's on, in the side yard?
Correct.
That's the protrusion. I didn't mention that in my presentation. That is seven feet off, but actually, the, the, the building itself, the sidewall is, it complies at 16. Uh, but, yeah, that's, that's the access to the basement, the bulkhead there. And I'm not, I, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding the rest of your question, Mr. Hurwitz.
I'm, I'm trying to figure out, you know, I see something labeled "poolhouse."
Right.
Okay, and then I see something unlabeled, and then I see a bulkhead.
Oh, it's all part of the same structure. The, the proposed poolhouse is all of what is the dark line, uh, around the, the perimeter. Uh, the portion to the north that's adjacent to the bulkhead is unfinished storage space, and the, the portion to the south of that is, um, two stories, finished, um, you know, function space or not function space, but just general living space for, you know, a, a, a ping-pong table for kids or, and there's some bathroom, bathrooms provided as well.
It just seems like this could be shrunk up a bit, you know? Like, I understand, you know, what Manny's saying, and it seems like there's room for a little bit of redesign to it.
Sure, I mean, I, I suppose that's always true, but I, I think the question on, on a variances, are the three conditions met under 48, Section 10? Do you have unique features owing to which, uh, it's a hardship? Literal enforcement of the ordinance is a hardship, financial or otherwise, and can it be granted without substantial detriment? I suggest in this case, given all the factors that are very unique to this proposal, it, it meets all of those requirements.
You've got the poolhouse storage area that's the size of a two-car garage. I don't think that's necessary. This is really an accessory structure by any definition.
Well, it, it is. I mean, it's, it's.
I really.
It's, that's how we're applying for. It is an accessory structure. It's otherwise permitted under our zoning.
I'm just going to say right now, I'm not in favor of this at all. A two-floor with a two-car garage and a bathroom that's, that's not even going to be used for residence.
Mr. Chair, I, I don't, where's the garage? There's no garage proposed.
Well, that unfinished space, is it, is it? What are the dimensions of that unfinished space?
I don't, I don't know, but it's not a garage. It says there's going to be no cars parked in. It's, it's going to, it's going to have a full basement, and he can't park a car in that.
Yeah, it's got a full basement. Um, this is a little more substantial than any poolhouse. Sorry.
So.
Anybody else feel like that?
Well, I guess the question is that the structure to the, if you're facing it from the street to the left with the barn doors across the front, unfinished. I mean, it's, is it, I, I guess the question is, what are the dimensions of that particular piece of this entire structure?
I have to look at the plans. I'll tell you in a second.
It's 18 by 26. No, by 20.
Eighteen.
What, what's that?
Eighteen by.
Twenty.
Fifteen. Oh.
Twenty. Twenty.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, by 20, yeah, that's what it is.
Very hard to read.
Yeah, that's not his fault.
I mean, is it meant for boat, storage, regular, just storage with regard to the pool? What, what would be stored in there?
They don't have a garage, so it'd be for storing things that otherwise you see in people's garages when they don't park their car in their garage, so.
And my wife's an avid gardener, and so her plan is to use that for gardening things.
And it is a full basement, so he is correct. You're not going to be wheeling in a 5,000-ton car on top of it.
And if you look at the, the grade in the front going to that structure, it's far too steep to get any, roll anything into it.
Well, I rented a garage that was in an old barn that had a full basement under it.
Did it, yeah, well, anyway.
Timbers that were that big. So it was possible.
There's only one tree that's proposed to be removed. The rest is wooded along the front there, and it's proposed to remain that way.
Well, open to public comment at this point, or? Or you want to go back? Go ahead, Manny, I don't want to.
Public comment. Anybody from the public would like to speak? We have a letter from, uh, Frank in Zarillo dated April 9th, 2024, and he has been a next-door, next-door neighbor of the Creedons and Brian Bun for over 10 years, and he is in favor. So, um, anybody else from the public?
Make a motion to close public comment.
Thank you. I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I, I don't have anything further. I'm happy to answer any more questions, but. I mean, I, I guess to the comment of it's too large, to reduce it to a point where it would comply, again, given the limitations on topography behind it, would render it a six-foot-wide building, front to back.
As a respect, there's a difference between that, bringing it all the way to 30, as opposed to the, the request that you're making, which is, instead of complying with 30, you want 12.8. Is there something in the middle that would? If I'm, if I'm reading what the, the board is saying, that would be more palatable.
Sure, I mean, all the neighbors are in favor, and no one's opposing it. There's no one across the street who's going to be impacted by it. I just. We could come back with a redesign, but it won't comply with the setback because we wouldn't be here if it did. So, um, what would you like to see, those who are not in favor? I mean.
It's got almost a, you could call it a full kitchen, uh.
Doesn't have a kitchen.
I don't know about an oven, doesn't show an oven, but, um, I don't know.
I mean, I, I think the condition, and you. I agree, it's the storage. I mean, you agree to the condition that this will not be used for habitation.
100%, there's no intention to do that. This is a second home for the applicants. They come here on the weekends, they come here during the summer. They have a large family. It's just for the kids to be able to have a place to be when they're using the pool.
I, I don't inherently have an issue with the, with the poolhouse, which is really what we're talking about, but what is added to that is really a separate piece of that. It is really not the poolhouse. That is a storage area, a significant one at that. I mean, this is the size of a one-and-a-half-car garage.
So if we reduce that, would that be, would the board be more amenable to approve it?
I certainly think it, you know.
We, we'd ask for a continuance. If that's the case, we'll come back with a redesign and ask to resubmit, uh, and, and, and present a redesign that's more palatable to the board.
I mean, the trouble with that, I mean, just, is that aside from the bulkhead, the actual storage house comply with the setback requirement?
On the side, not on the front.
On the side only.
On the side only, not the front.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
How many square feet, if you have it off the top of your head, is the poolhouse?
1340, including the storage.
Including the storage.
And is that storage area, is that location. that storage area, is that location dictated by that existing patio? Because it looks like that's being.
Yes. It's, that's, yes, we're right up against that as well.
So the patio is existing currently?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't see the patio, but.
The patio around the pool, is that just really tiling around the pool?
What's that, composed?
It's a concrete slab.
But it's like a couple of feet wide, right?
Uh, yeah, it's probably about, yeah, three, four feet.
Any questions, guys?
Is there, I hate to question or be this sort of definitive, but is there a way to get letters of support from the other butters that you've spoken with?
I could certainly ask them.
I, you know, again, to me, I always question how it fits in and how people in the neighborhood feel about it, per se. Now, I don't dismiss what you're telling us is truthful, except we only see the one from, so. To me, that, you know, and I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I, you know, it is large, right? You're adding 1,300-square-foot accessory structure to a, you know.
Plus the storage, right?
That, no, that included, 1,300 included the storage, so. I think what this board is saying is we need to shrink this down somehow. That's my opinion of what the conversations have been. I don't, definitely let me know what that is. I think the setbacks are, you know, not necessarily extreme, but, you know, you're pushing the boundary here for sure. So I think that's the recommendation that this board is leaning towards.
I mean, there may be something we can do with the bulkhead and move the access to the inside, and eliminate the bulkhead, which would then make it purely a request for a front yard variance, as opposed to front and side yard. And then maybe also look at, it sounds like the storage space is top-of-mind consciousness for the board, the size of it. Look at reducing that.
Is there a full, is there a full, I'm looking at the drawing here, and it
It's eight foot.
appears, is it a full basement underneath the pool house?
Yes.
It is.
Poured eight foot.
Poured eight foot.
The space that's a storage space, didn't?
No, not even that, just the, just the main.
The storage space is going to be on a deck above the foundation like the rest. It's all on, well, it's, it's not all ungraded. I think there's three steps down into the storage space from the main.
So that was also my question, is there an opportunity to, you know, to use the, to use the full basement in the pool house as the storage space? Again, which was the reason I was asking what potentially might.
It's going to be tougher if we eliminate the exterior bulkhead.
But no, I'm saying if you didn't have the accessory part to that, if you just had the pool house, and you had a full basement in the pool house, that's, you know, about 400 or 500 square feet minus mechanicals of, you know, of space or storage. Could have a bulkhead to the side of it, potentially, that would fall well within the side setback, and most likely the street setback as well, or very minimally. So just curious if that's an opportunity.
It's difficult moving things in and out into a basement. They don't have the garage space. This isn't a garage, but a lot of people use their garage as storage.
You said this is a second, second home?
Yeah.
Well, your reason for basically putting it in that spot is the grading of the lot, but.
In the proximity to the pool.
Do a lot of regrading of the lot, but you're going to dig an eight-foot-deep hole over the full footprint of the pool house?
Sure, but we don't want to relocate the pool. It's been there since 1989.
Yeah, I mean, again, if, to the board, if it was proposing to add a two-car garage, for instance, right, or even a three-car with maybe some, you know, facility above, would we be having the same discussion? I doubt it.
If it was attached, no.
What about, well, if it was, but again, due to the, due to the topography of the lot and the challenges that the homeowner is presenting to us, he proposed a three-car detached, would we be having this discussion? I don't, again, I don't know the answer. Again, it wouldn't have a full basement underneath it because it's a garage, potentially. Yeah, it just feels like, you know, again, we're right back to the same, trying to squeeze something into a space that it probably isn't meant to be at this particular size. That's, again, that's.
Variance that we're talking about here?
Yep.
I just don't see it.
In what way?
You could do that within the setbacks, both front and side. You need to maybe scale back your.
No, because the front setback is 30 feet.
If we scaled it back to the 30-foot, it would be six feet.
12.8 feet?
It'd be six feet deep. It'd be smaller than the shed.
I don't have a laser pointer, but those backs limits of the structure can easily be, easily be put closer to the pool.
Well, you're talking about digging up patio space and, and again, topography that, yeah, I, I, I don't know.
He kind of makes a point, too, if you were to shift the pool house more to where the, where the building is, that was, that is used, you have proposed for storage and then brought it back. Maybe, I mean, it would still be fairly close to the pool. I have more issue with the, with the additional space. I mean, that's a, that's a large structure. Pool house, not so much, but it's a two-floor pool house. Again, is, really is almost like an accessory dwelling, but it's not. So I think it's just a scale that probably most people are having an issue with here.
I mean, it's a permitted accessory structure in the zone. The use is permitted. The structure's permitted. It's just a matter of the fact that it doesn't comply with the setbacks.
So it's not permitted, then? I mean, it's permitted if you meet the criteria, but it doesn't, it doesn't guarantee, those things don't guarantee an approval.
Right. Nobody's entitled to a variance.
True. But if you meet the three requirements.
Still doesn't guarantee an approval. Again, I have no issue with the pool house itself. I think the secondary part of that, I think it's a big ask. That's all.
Okay. Can we move to continue? A request to continuance?
I'll move to continue.
To what date? How long do you need?
Is your mic on?
Yeah.
What is, Attorney Creeden, what's the red markings on this? To the, no, down here, next to the accessory, existing dwelling, that red box?
Septic.
Septic. Oh, septic, gotcha, gotcha, sorry. I should have known that, yep. Yep, I see it. No, I'm just thinking to myself, if there's a way to add a, you know, any way on the lot to add a garage to the current structure, and it doesn't feel like there is, right? It's just too tight with existing septic and everything else. So, again, due to that, you know, I, I, yeah, I don't know, I don't have, I don't see a problem. Honestly, I don't. I mean, it's, unless it was maybe built on a, I mean, put it on a slab? I don't know, it does seem like it's a, it's big, yeah.
Is with the setback. 12.8 feet from 30? I mean, I could see 25 feet, give you 5 feet.
But again, nobody across the street, right?
You can't build a reasonable structure in that setback. You can't. That's just a, you can't.
It just doesn't fit the site. I mean, you should be able to squeeze it in if you want to, but.
So we'd ask for four weeks if we couldn't come back with a redesign, and some letters of support if the other neighbors are so inclined. We'll ask.
We have May 8th or May 22nd?
Either works.
22nd. Does that work? Gives you a little time for plus weeks?
Ask for May 8th, I think, instead. Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Today, the 10th?
To continue?
Just, I know now I will not be available on May 8th. I'm just putting it out there now. It's fine if somebody steps in. No, I'm just, I'm just making aware, I'm just making aware, I won't be.
Yeah, I would say 22nd as well, it's possible I won't be here.
We'll take the 22nd?
Okay. Okay, and that'll be virtual.
Okay.
All right.
I second the continuance.
I crossed out 22 and put in 8, now I have to cross out 8 again. All right.
So all in favor?
Do I have a second for continuing until the 22nd?
Second?
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you.
See you on the 22nd. Next. We only have five more to go. Patience. All right. Appeal number 2024-010 Trebuko? Or is it Trebuccio? Trebuko? Okay. Michael Trebuko has filed an appeal of administrative official's decision in accordance with 240-11E Bulk Regulations. The appellant seeks to overturn the denial of her request for enforcement dated March 7th, 2024, in the denial of request for enforcement. Letter, the building commissioner stated that the property in question benefits from a pre-existing non-conforming status and is subject to single lot exemption outlined in Mass General Law Chapter 40A Section 6, and therefore is considered buildable. The subject's property is located at 361 Straightway, Hyannis, MS. As shown on Assessor's Map 269, as parcel 233, is located in Residence B, RB Zoning District. And, hello?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Attorney James Connors. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Trebuk. Be very brief this evening, certainly not like our first hearing. As a matter of housekeeping, I do have a very brief memorandum in counter to Attorney Boudreau, who submitted his last October, which supported the decision for non-conforming use, which we object to. And if I may, I'll submit it. We have two points of contention that, as the brief memo is being passed out, one being it's our position that a merger versus a non-merger had occurred, whether the property is still considered a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The former owner purchased it prior to the amendments in 1985. They sold it thereafter, approximately seven years later. Attorney Boudreau had outlined those issues. He cited a case, NER, which was held in 2018. Upon doing research, came up with a case in 2020 that discounted the holding in NER based on the fact that in NER, the property was owned by a trust, a mother and a daughter, versus, in this case, the wife held the non-conforming lot. The husband and wife owned the adjoining lot up the hill from it. I would suggest that in my memo, it covers the distinction between the two. And I would say that the title was only nominal. It was a wife and a husband and wife. Certainly in a divorce or a death, the surviving spouse would be entitled to the property absent some other mechanism which is not present in the deed that was transferred. As well, we have an issue with the septic, which was perked in 2008 versus, here it's 2024, another objector to the project. Mr. Jackson, down below, has contended that there's constant settling of his property. He has to fill it in every year. There's a pond across the road, and it's our belief that the small lot, 11,000 square feet, is inundated with springs, causing the settling on my client's property. That raises a grave issue of septic. I have a picture that certainly has demonstrated the settling that he fills in every year, and I'd like to pass that out as well. The matter really turns on whether the property had been grandfathered in when the zoning amendments had changed in 1985. The original owner, who sold the property, had ample time to address the nonconformity, I would suggest about seven years. They failed to do it. They sold it. The property sat vacant until, I think, last year when the applicant for the building permit had purchased it. It's 11,000 square feet. The zoning in this district is now an acre. I think we had a great discussion earlier regarding the applicability of zoning and septic and the like. I would suggest that 11,000 square feet is less than a postage stamp. I would also suggest that the nonconformity has been lost based on the activity of the former owner. And if you'll review the memo very briefly, and I attach the case that we're citing, I would suggest that the lot is still and remains a non-conforming lot versus it being a buildable lot. And we contrast that with the determination of Mr. Florence, who indicated that it is a buildable, non-conforming lot. I would ask your review of my memorandum and a determination that our appeal be sustained. Any questions?
Your memorandum dated today?
Today.
Okay. I breezed through it, I'm not going to have really a chance in this time scope to do it. I would ask you, though, what this is a picture of?
There, if you see the woodpile, to the left of the woodpile in the picture, there's a sinkhole, basically, and it's evident in the picture. He fills that in every year. He's downhill, Mr. Jackson, that is, from the adjoining property that's the subject of tonight's appeal. It's a sloping property that the springs in our position run down through his property, and that demonstrates that there's an awful lot of water, and it rains, raises the issue of a septic, and whether a current perk test would even pass. There was a, an engineer's stamp of 2008 where it did pass. Apparently, the town does not have any documentation other than the surveyor's stamp and mapping. There's nothing else. Mr. Trebuko had tried to obtain it, and he was told by a town official that there's no record of any results of a perk test. It's just the surveyor's or engineer's stamp, and that's it.
Could I ask, are these lots contiguous, or are they, is there anything separating them? A road, a path, and anything?
There's absolutely nothing separating. Mr. Trebuko is on the, if you're facing up the hill, he's to the left of the property. Mr. Jackson is below the property, and to the right of the property, looking up the hill, there is a road.
Oh, thank you.
A question. Again, it's difficult for the board to consider matters that you just brought to our attention now. But, explain to me what would have happened to the sale to an independent unrelated third party subsequent to the merger? That person obviously bought the lot with the understanding that it was buildable, or whatever consideration exchanged hands. They didn't buy land just to own it. If it was merged, was that transaction, was that a proper transfer?
It should have been merged. That's our position with the adjoining lot that husband and wife had owned. What happens to it today? It's our opinion that it's a non-conforming lot.
Not today, because in the interim, there was a transaction. There was, there was a transfer of title to an unrelated third party.
Correct.
So if the lot was merged, the person who acquired it, yeah, was it a proper transfer is what I'm trying to get at?
And that would be the issue of the purchaser, and I believe it was in 1992.
Years ago, right.
Many, many years ago. That should have been addressed, and certainly anybody that would have purchased it would have made a determination, or should have made a determination way back when, whether it was conforming with the zoning amendments that occurred in 1985.
It preceded this decision, that it gives us, it's anachronistic in a way, right? At the time the person bought that property, this law was not in the books. So they bought that property, understanding that they were buying a buildable lot. What you're asking us to do is to upset all that.
That is correct.
Thank you.
So, so another quick question. So at the time when that third-party transfer happened, were the owners still husband and wife? Oh, so I'm sorry. I'm reading, I'm mixing the two, but
Yes.
what was the ownership of the two parcels at the time of the third-party transfer?
They were still husband and They were still husband and wife in, at the time of the transaction of the subject lot. They live in Bermuda. The, the wife owned the lot independent of the husband.
Understand.
So it's like a nominal distinction between the upper lot and the lower lot. And so husband and wife were married at the time. She had since died, and we did our research, and he's now deceased as well.
But it transferred before he died, correct?
Yes.
And the two lots were purchased on separate dates?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask you what the address of your client is?
15 Oakview Terrace.
Okay.
Which is that?
Let me see. Yep. All righty. Then as far as the photograph goes and the sink, sinkhole or whatever you're calling, depression, my guess would be that's a stump dump that's been buried over. If you have groundwater issues like that, that are causing settlement like that, that doesn't seem likely.
Upon review of the site two weeks ago, two Saturdays ago, actually, we determined Mr. Jackson had a map. He could not find it, where it showed a stream at some point, a historic stream, that flowed across the road, through an adjoining lot, and then down to a pond. Unfortunately, we were unable to locate a copy of that, so I would suggest that there are some underground springs there. I don't think it was a stump dump.
Thank you.
So let me ask you a question. So if, and I'm hoping I'm understanding this correctly, if her husband had passed at the time when they still had not sold off the lot, then it would be my understanding that that would then have merged at that point?
That, that would be our opinion, yes.
Okay. But it was sold subsequently before that happened, correct?
That is correct.
So how do we go backwards and then change that?
They, under the, the analysis of merger, they had an option of, with, with the state and the by-walls, the state has a particular set of rules. The town changed the zoning. There is a grace period to do something. They had seven years to do something. They did not do it.
I still struggle on how I go back, especially when precedent is something like 2018.
Yeah, the precedent in 2018 is the precedent that Attorney Boudreau had cited for the basis of it remaining a nonconforming lot, which was long after the transfer as well. Mine's just two years newer that I had cited.
It's, is my understanding that if we're to find, to overturn for the building commissioner's decision, that it would have to be somewhat overwhelming evidence that, to the contrary? And am I wrong here?
The, the square footage of the existing lot is approximately 11,000 square feet. The current zoning is 43,560 feet, which is an acre.
So, and again, you just presented this to us, but explain this to me. The facts, the, the, the wife owned the lot in question directly, as a sole owner, and the contiguous lot was, they held as tenants in common or joint?
Tennessee by the entirety.
Tennessee by the entirety, let's call it that. If, since the wife owned it in her own right, if she objected to using that lot to meet any nonconformity, how does this opinion help you?
It helps us because it essentially describes what a nonconformity is, how the zoning is applied, when it's, when zoning is changed, which it was in 1985, and what she could have done to preserve her rights, which she never did. So it's our position she lost the protections of grandfather clauses.
No, no, but it's not what I'm asking. This, this seems to be saying that in the facts of the Murphy decision, that the Dominicos, this couple, owned a property, and their revocable trust owned the other. Both parties had interest in both lots.
That's correct.
Our facts are different. The husband did not have an interest in the property we're talking about, except that he is a husband. I get that part. But it was owned directly and solely by the wife. That's not the facts of the case you gave. Is it? I just read it in 20 seconds, so forgive me.
I understand. The case also indicates that nominal differences basically are not something that, so if it was a mother-daughter, like in the NER case, that's distinctly different. As a husband and wife, they certainly have certain rights to the property, the marital property. Whether she owned, she could own a car independently, and the father, and the husband has a right to that car at some point of transfer if she passed away.
But that's if she passes away. That's the... And again, I apologize. You just, you just presented this to us, so...
And that's, I apologize for the late submission as well.
Yeah, these last-minute submissions are...
Apologize, it's hard to work through these dates. We've had this before, and the particulars of it require more than five minutes reading it. It's just hard.
Just like the previous applicant, if you would like an extension, I'm more than happy to grant it.
I'd like to hear some more from public and Attorney Boudreau.
Sure.
I'm still at a loss for what the relevance of the depression, whatever its causes. What does that have to do with the adjacent lot?
It's the contention that the water's running downhill. It's, it's a spring, and it's causing a distinct indentation in his land that he has to fill in every year. Unfortunately, as I indicated earlier, I could not find a map that referenced a stream that ran through there historically, which indicates the presence of groundwater. And with a 2008 septic perk test, I would suggest that's a stale perk test.
Well, if it passed in 2008, who knows? It's likely that it would pass now. Do we have, when we're done talking to attorney for Mr. Trebuk, at what point can we hear from Attorney Boudreau? Is that public comment, or?
Brian Florence, it looks like the building commissioner would like to say something as well.
Building Commissioner.
Absolutely. Oh, yes, yes. There are a number of people that we're waiting to hear from. Would you like to give the floor to the building inspector?
I sure would.
Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals. Thank you. It's an appeal of my decision. I, I should get a chance to come up and defend it, right?
Absolutely.
So the wife and husband Tennessee thing, that, that's really a question of whether or not somebody had control, whether this is a checkerboarding scheme to allow a development to be preserved and protected from zoning, which is not allowed. But that wasn't the case here. They were bought separately. They were sold separately at, you know, before the death of an individual. I would also say that the settling issue is, that's moot. The, Mr. Jackson, counsel, Mr. Trebuk, they're not geologists. They're just looking at a hole in the ground, a depression in the ground, suggesting that, that, that that's a cause for this to be overturned.
I agree.
The problem with that is, there are people looking at this. We have, we have soil engineers, we have engineers that are doing, doing the septic systems. Those people are professionals in that trade, and they will make a determination if there's a problem with a sinkhole there. But I would suggest to you that this is an improper appeal. There's three criteria in Massachusetts General Law 48, Section 15, for making an appeal. The first one is that they make an appeal within 30 days. They did that. The second criteria is that they notified the town clerk of the appeal, and they did that, but they didn't state the reasons thereof. They certainly didn't state the reasons that counsel is talking about here this evening. That's all new information. I didn't benefit from it. It wasn't advertised. It wasn't part of what the clerk heard. And lastly, they're supposed to notify me. I was never notified, not by the applicant. I was notified by staff. Anna sent me an email and said, Mr. Trebuk asked that I send this to you, but it was not a certified copy, certified by the clerk, and properly served to me. So never had a chance to build a case, never had a chance to do any of that stuff, which is the reason why they're supposed to do that. And then today, they presented evidence that I was never, I never had a chance to benefit from. I couldn't, I couldn't address it if I wanted to, because I don't even have a copy of it. So that should have been delivered along with the notice to me. With that said and done, let's look at the merits of the case. The whole idea behind pre-existing nonconforming lots is that, that the state allows, under Mass General Law 48, Section 6, allows you to protect lots that are undersized as long as you take certain actions. And how do I find that out? I asked the applicant to give us a zoning narrative. Mr. Boudreau provided that zoning narrative. I looked at it. It was solid. I understand that there was a husband and wife, and then a wife ownership of the lots, but as we've discussed already, they were, they were bought at separate times and sold well before the Tennessee by rights came, came into effect. So this is a very simple case. I did the right thing. We, I reasonably looked at it. I judiciously examined the documents, and I responsibly issued a building permit, and I ask that you uphold my decision.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
If you have any questions.
I guess Attorney Boudreau didn't really need to come today.
So you said something that was not clear to me from, from the materials. The lot in question, the one that was owned directly and solely by the wife, that was sold while the couple was married?
While they were, yeah, while they were alive, yeah. I don't know if they were still married. I didn't look into that.
They're still alive.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because, again, that's a distinguishing factor from the case that we just saw. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, building commissioner.
Good evening. Mark Boudreau representing Ken Tomason. He is the owner of the lot. I don't want to repeat anything. I guess I'd ask if the board had any questions, but I guess the biggest point I'd make is, if any of you were married and you were told that it's a nominal distinction between being single or married, you might duck. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak from the, from the guys? Okay, I'll open public comment now. Would you ladies like to speak?
My name's Lisa Jackson. I'm at 19 Oakview Terrace. I'm not, this is a very unusual situation. We have a Michael and Lisa Jackson on one side, and we have another Michael Jackson on the other side of this property. So we're all, we're all butters. I didn't have time to submit an email to you, so I wrote it, but I didn't, can I read it to you what I was going to send to you? Will you allow me to?
Please.
Thank you. When I bought my home five years ago, the adjacent lot was undeveloped, undevelopable due to not meeting the zoning size requirement. This was crucial information for me, considering its proximity to my home. However, recent events suggest a deviation from the established regulations, leaving me with doubts about the reliability of previous, previous assurances. I also ask why the previous owner was informed the construction wasn't feasible on this lot, leading them to sell it for a nominal amount. They sold it for $89,900, and now it is on the market presently for $230,000. Yet, the current owner is being given the green light for development. This inconsistency raises serious questions about fairness and transparency in our community's regulations. It's simply unjust, improper, and deeply misleading to have two different sets of rules applied in this matter. The previous owner could have had the opportunity to sell that lot as buildable for the amount that it is presently on the market now. She could not do that. We currently have a building commissioner responsible for enforcing the town laws. However, it appears that the individual in this role can easily change those laws. As stated in the emails that I have received, I can't wrap my head around the fact that all it took to approve this, and it was stated in the email, was that he had to just see one court case from a zoning attorney. And if that was the case, we also had a court case that was just reviewed, that he presented as well, and I hope to expect that same consideration. We are, we do know that there's been multiple builders that have looked at this lot, and it's been on the market for, previously, and it's been not built, it was not built on. They just didn't want to do it. We don't know why. There could be, there were rumors, I don't know if there were rumors, but something about a perk test, not, a perk test that was done from a previous builder that did not pass. We cannot find a present perk test right now. Like you said, all that's there is just a stamp that's on the building plan, so we're really kind of concerned. The lot is a small lot. It's literally up against our, right up against our property. We can have this obtrusive fence going down. For a matter of fact, our driveway is paved onto this property. So we now have to, if this goes through, remove this hardscape, which we had no idea, thought it was our driveway, that's on there, preventing a lot of privacy. We're going to have a back deck or however the builder, we did speak with the builder. The builder's been very, he's been great with us. He's spoken to us. He understands our issues. We told him our feelings. It's just, like I said, we bought this house knowing and being told that this lot was not buildable. We would have not purchased this house if we knew that a home was going to come right. It's a pork chop lot as it is. We have, it's, you were talking earlier about things being jammed in to all these, this space. This is what's happening here, is getting jammed in to, to a lot that, right now, is not buildable.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Could I ask you a very quick question, just while you're standing there?
Sure.
Is your main concern, is it, is it visual? Is it distance? What is it?
It's distance, visual, privacy, and also how this, you know, what I just don't understand, I just don't think it was fair how this all came about. I'm also thinking about the previous owners and, you know, how, what's going on here with, like I said, they were told it wasn't buildable. They sold it as an unbuildable lot, and if they went through, that's...
It is, and I can't speak to this because, again, I am, as, as the building commissioner stated, I'm not a professional, you know, soil analyst or anything, but there are circumstances where things, you know, in 2008, maybe it didn't perk, and if they never parked it since then, it could perk now.
It might not perk too.
That's very possible, but that is a risk that the buyer takes.
And one other question, are you number 19?
19.
19, okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Anyone else from the public?
I'll introduce myself again as Michael Trebuk from 15 Oakview Terrace. I've lived in my house for 38 years, and along with many of the butters next to me, and we're all against this house going in. You talked earlier about, you know, appeasing the butters. Well, all the butters here don't want this house being built, for obvious reasons, okay? And like we talked about, it was bought again in 1995, but the laws had changed for 45,000 square feet in 1985. So if it was sold in 95, shouldn't the laws pertain to the new zoning versus the old zoning? That's, I'm not an attorney or stuff like that, but, you know, that's just one fact. This lot, if you look at it, goes from here to here. It's almost a 20-foot drop in the lot area. That's why the runoff, okay, and that's why there's a definite runoff. And regarding the perk test, I'm not an engineer, but, you know, the commissioner said himself, water flow, water tables change from week to week to month to month, okay? His words to me in, in an email. So I'm saying, let's do another perk test, because I'm pretty sure it's not going to pass, but I'm not an engineer at this, at this stage, okay? And again, to get... okay? And, again, to get back to the abudders, every abudder to this lot is against this. Now, I've lived there for thirty-eight years, and there's been no movement, and I know the contractors in this town, if they could find a buildable lot, and in thirty-eight years, not one decided to build until Ken came in and did what he had to do with Brian and got the building permit and got this lot approved for a buildable lot. That's all I'm saying. And, you know, I'm not sure about the conservation committee coming in and potentially, you know, looking at this water as well, okay, in terms of being potentially contaminated or not contaminated or whatever. So, hopefully, you know, the consideration to deny this building permit would, you know, would be in the best interest of the abudders at this point in time. Because I have to tell you, maybe I'm out of step here, but the day I put the appeal in, the day I put the appeal in, Mr. Tamezian put the, put his, put the land for seal again for two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars cash deal, whatever that means. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Agnes Trabuco, Mike's wife, fifteen Oakview Terrace. And I agree with everything my husband said. Unfortunately, I, we didn't realize that we had to do other things for Brian, and, and was no, you know, we tried to do the, the best we could. We met with Anna in the zoning board. She helped us fill out the application. We did what we were supposed to do. We weren't, and there was no mal-intent not to include Brian. We didn't know we had to tell him there was an appeal. We asked about, would, would people know? But we didn't know we had to do it directly to Brian, and we apologize for that to the board. But, we've lived there forty years. We have, you know, this is our retirement, and we just don't really need a small eight-hundred-and-something-square-foot house being put on an eleven-thousand-square-foot lot. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move to close public comment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Would anybody else like to speak? Attorney Boudreaux, attorney Connors?
Oh.
There is.
Just wanted to...
I asked you first. Were you going to?
Okay. Just wanted to reiterate that we, we have a battle of two cases. I would suggest that deliberation of review of, of the legal documentation I had provided you will counter what Mr. Boudreaux had said in his analysis, and husband and wife nominal, I'm only referring to ownership of land, not, not marital bliss. Thank you.
Just so the board is aware, there's a deed restriction for one bedroom. That's all they're going to get.
I didn't know that.
And one of the things that my client will have to do is he'll have to remove a bocce court that was built onto his property.
What was that again?
A bocce court.
Oh, bocce ball, bocce.
Yes. The neighbors considered this undeveloped piece of land as part of theirs, and they encroached on it, both of them. Actually, all three. Thank you.
Thank you. I closed public comment. I'm sorry.
Attorney, can I ask you a question of Attorney Boudreaux? We just got this decision. I don't know if you've had a chance to study it more than we have, but reaction to, to, especially on the point of the, the property being transferred while there was still a marriage in place, while...
So, I don't know how far back you, back you want me to go, but in the seventies and eighties, there was a lot of zoning changes in this town. And back then, the developers who had forty, fifty lot subdivisions would checkerboard by using realty trusts. The beneficiaries were the same. So, eventually, they said, no, you can't do that. So, the developers then would put a lot in a daughter's name. They put it into a corporation that they were the sole owner of, and again, it, the case law sort of veered about what was control, who had the control. I think it's pretty clear in all the case law that husband and wife is one particular unit, and one of the spouses is completely separate. My brother referenced a divorce or a death. We didn't have that. And if we did, I think the circumstances, excuse me, would be different. The law, the law hasn't changed. It's just refined a little bit. One of the caveats, and then two thousand eighteen case basically said that if the husband and wife in question on this property were the developers of this, they weren't, Nick Franco was, then that would be different.
Thank you. That's going back. Anyone else? We've closed public comment. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing portion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings closed. Now, we can deliberate.
I think in looking at this, I mean, we're obviously not here to determine whether the lot can be parked, whether, you know, we're looking to, just so everybody still understands and everybody from the public, we're here to just either, we are, we are agreeing or we are not agreeing. We are either overturning or we're not. So, I think it, in our initial thoughts, that this, in fact, was too different, that there was, as, as, as put forth, that in the case of a divorce or a death, if we were talking about that, that did not occur here. These are separate lots. They were sold as separate lots. I, I personally don't see enough here to overturn.
I don't either, actually.
Yeah, I agree. I, and, and again, I wish I had more time, time than the study does, but my reading, I think, is consistent with Attorney Boudreaux's, that, that, I, I think these were held separately. The wife owned the particular property directly. It was sold by her, and that seems consistent with facts that, that, that would argue against the merger. These were separate lots, sold separately, and if at the time the zoning didn't apply to it, it is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. I think I agree with the, with the inspector.
Okay. I'm going to close deliberation and go right to the findings. Are we in agreement that we are going to uphold the building commissioner's decision? I'm in favor of that? Everyone? Okay, so my findings are, the board, the board affirms the building commissioner's findings that three sixty-one Straitway Hyannis meets the criteria of a pre-existing non-conforming lot and is therefore buildable. So, that is the end of that. So, I will say, does anyone second motion?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's it. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Did you vote to?
Uphold.
Uphold.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, should we, do you want us to take an affirmative vote? Probably makes sense. I vote, I, I make a motion that we, the board vote to uphold the building commissioner's determination.
Okay, let's do it again.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for having my back there.
Terrible.
Overkill.
I know. It just sucks.
I got used to the fact early, early on that I don't own.
I know. I get it. I get it. Yep.
I did work on the good, but I got a call from one of the other interns from the, like, she was a structural engineer or something, and she's like, oh my God, they're going to build a quarry next to mine. I'm like, what can I do? And I told her the same thing, about how we point, I'm like, do you...
They should have bought the land themselves. Yep. Shame. It just sucks. It's the worst part of this gig, isn't it? I mean, pitting neighboring...
Got to kill the silence here. Anna, can we look into, like, Paul did a really good job on late withdrawals, but late submissions of pertinent information I'd really like to talk to.
I have an idea. So, to the board, they either accept it or it's not. I think that was in there. I thought I read that.
Oh, this one here from?
I thought I read it in your...
This one here?
Yeah.
Oh, not a continuation. This late submission by Attorney Connor of, he totally took a new route on his defense, but, okay. Everybody back? Yep. Okay, this is the final hearing of tonight. Appeal number twenty-two-four-zero-eleven-seven-seventy-three South Main Street LLC. Seven-seven-three South Main Street LLC has applied to modify condition number four of appeal number two nineteen, twenty-nineteen oh-oh-five to allow an additional accessory structure on the property, and also applied for a special permit in accordance with twenty-four, two-forty dash one-twenty-five zoning of appeals, zoning board of appeals. The applicant proposes to construct an approximately twelve-foot by twenty-point-five-foot in-ground pool approximately three feet from the westerly property line where fifteen feet is required. The subject property is located at seven-seven-three South Main Street Centerville, Mass., as shown on Assessor's Map one-eighty-five as parcel zero-one-three. It is located in the Craigville Beach District CBD and the Centerville River North Bank CRNB neighborhood overlay zoning district. Hello?
Hello again. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, for the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I'm an attorney with Nutter McLennan &amp; Fish in Hyannis on behalf of the applicant. I have a few slides. I'm going to go through them relatively quickly. I know it's very late, and then, obviously, happy to try and answer your questions the board may have. Joining me this, this evening is Tina Hassiotis, who's sitting in the back. She is the principal of the entity that owns this property. To my left at the table is Matt Eddy from Baxter-Nye Engineering, who's the engineer on the project. And then, seated behind Matt in the front row is Dylan Hoyt, who is from Shoreline Pools, who is the pool consultant on this project. As noted in the notice, this property is within the Centerville River North Bank District, the CRNB, which is a part of the Craigville Beach DCPC that's contained at the back of the zoning ordinance. The site is presently developed with a single-family dwelling, detached family apartment garage structure, pier, and hardscape. There are several prior zoning decisions affecting the property. The first one was from nineteen eighty-nine. It's appeal number nineteen eighty-nine dash sixty-seven. This was a special permit to expand the accessory structure located on the property for additional garage and storage space. Subsequently, thirty years or so later in twenty-nineteen, the applicant came back to the zoning board seeking a modification of that original nineteen eighty-nine decision, and this board authorized that that accessory structure be used as a family apartment. In that decision, the board included condition four, which was, we're seeking to gain your approval of tonight under this condition, that provided that construction of additional accessory structures is prohibited without approval from this board. That's, as you know, a somewhat typical condition in these residential decisions that the board issues. And then, last year, about a year ago, we were again before the board with appeal number twenty-two-three dash eleven, seeking to modify that condition number four for the proposed dipping pool that's also before you this evening. We ended up withdrawing that application previously without prejudice, which the board granted. There were some questions about noise. We did not have a pool contractor at that point. Now, Mr. Hoyt is here, and so we've gotten his input into the plan, which I'll walk through in just a moment, and are bringing this back to the board. So, I apologize. This site plan is a little bit hard to see on this graphic, but you should all have copies of it in your file, just to orient you. My pointer's not working, but South Main Street is on the right-hand side. Matt, I think you have a pointer. South Main Street is right here. The Centerville River is to the sort of bottom of the plan. Maybe you can show where the existing house is, the main house. Then, there's an existing accessory structure that I mentioned that was the subject of those prior zoning decisions. And then, I've circled in on this plan, you'll see two red circles. The blue circle, which Matt is showing, is the location of the proposed dipping pool. The pool is proposed at about twelve feet by twenty-point-five feet. It's a saltwater pool, about two-hundred-and-forty-six square feet. It's a small pool. It's small. It's shallow. These types of pools are unsuitable for vigorous activity. They're really just for sort of plunge pools or dipping pools, cooling down and relaxing. There's no diving boards. There's no slides associated with this. Again, it's not for sort of a vigorous activity in the pool. That pool is in the same location on this plan as was previously shown to the board about a year ago. As I mentioned, one of the questions the board had last time was where is the pool equipment going to be located, and that was something that we've now updated the plan with, having Mr. Hoyt's involvement. So, the red circle, which is shown on the plan, which is sort of on the northeast corner of the accessory structure, is where the proposed pool equipment is proposed to be located. The pool would be, the equipment would be located on approximately six-foot, sorry, on a, on a concrete pad in this sort of northeast corner, and then surrounded by a six-foot stockade fence, and then further buffered by a six-foot evergreen hedge. The gate of the pool shelter for the fence would open sort of towards the main house, so away from the abutting property. As you can see, it's located on the roadside of the accessory, accessory structure, and so any noises, we think, would be attenuated by both the fence, the buffering, and South Main Street, which is a, a pretty busy road. In connection with this proposal, there's about sixteen square feet of new hardscape that's proposed that would connect the pool to the, an existing walkway, for a total of two-hundred-and-eighty-three square feet of new hardscape. In addition, though, the applicant is proposing to remove two-hundred-and-sixty-two square feet of existing impervious surfaces and sixty square feet of gravel surrounding where that pool equipment pad is located and where the plantings are proposed, all of which results in a net decrease of about thirty-nine square feet of hardscape on this property. In addition, this pool last year proposal went to the Barnstable Conservation Commission. It was approved by the Conservation Commission, and as part of that process, the Conservation Commission asked my client to remove about two-hundred-and-five square feet of existing lawn areas, abutting the coastal bank, and allow that land to be naturalized. And so, that also is incorporated into the... into this plan. This is a couple photos showing the location of where the pool is proposed. If you look at the site plan, you'll see that sort of behind the pool, towards the river, the grass area is proposed to be maintained, and in fact extended with the removal of some of the existing hardscape, but it's a small, tight area, it gives you a sense to how small this dipping pool really is proposed, that it's not even taking up all of the grass area that's shown on this plan. And just to give some context, in the upper right corner, that's the accessory structure, and then the house is running sort of alongside the accessory structure, and there's the With respect to the setback, the pool is proposed about three feet from the Westerly property line, this is about double of the existing setback from the existing accessory structure, which is about one and a half feet from that same property line. As you can see from the prior photos and from this one, this is a private setting, the grade on the subject property is several feet below the immediately abutting property, and you can also see there is a stone wall, a privet, and arborvitae that screens this area from the abutting property. With respect to the setback, the project actually does not require any relief from the setback requirements. The DCPC contains a provision that I've quoted here, it's 241315A, which creates special dimensions for pre-existing developed properties, and it provides in part that legally developed lots that were in existence as of November 6, 2009, and conformed to the existing zoning when legally created, the existing lot area, lot frontage, front side, and rear setbacks, and building height dimensions may be used in lieu of the following dimensional requirements in subsection B, except where stated otherwise, and subsection B has the sort of full table of dimensional requirements. So in order to qualify for that exception, if you will, there's sort of two requirements, and I've set them out here, so the first is that the lot needs to be legally, needs to be a legally developed lot that was in existence as of November 6, 2009. The answer is yes to that, this lot was created in 1931, we attached that land court lot to the application materials that we submitted, and that 1931 land court plan shows the house and the existing accessory structure before it was authorized to be expanded in 1989 on the property. The second criteria is that it conformed to existing zoning when legally created, and again, the answer is yes. Zoning was adopted in 1929 in Barnstable and essentially divided the town into residential and non-residential lots, this complied with those requirements, and so it meets that provision. Therefore, under that prior language that I just read, if the answer is yes to one and two, then the ordinance provides that you can use the existing lot area, lot frontage, front side, and rear yard setbacks in lieu of the dimensional table. Here, the existing setback to the Westerly property line is one and a half feet, and the proposed pool, again, is almost double that at about three feet. So, condition four of the 2019 decision is why we're here, that's the condition that requires us to come back to the board for additional accessory structures. We suggest that granting this request is consistent with that decision, and no substantial detriment to the surrounding area. The pool does not change the building coverage, this project will not increase the impervious coverage, and in fact, it decreases it a bit. As you saw from the photos, this is well-screened from the abutting lots and the roadway due to the changes in topography, as well as the plantings and vegetation. There's some environmental benefits of naturalizing the existing lawn area right by the coastal bank, something, again, that the Conservation Commission required. We've also, we suggest you cited the pool equipment in a location that is appropriate and well-screened and buffered, both in terms of from the roadway and from the abutting properties, and I know there were some questions at the last hearing about noise, and I would just, I made this point last time, but reiterate it now, that this pool is cited on a portion of the lot that is actively maintained, actively used, it's an area where play can happen, essentially you're just converting one type of play to another type of play with this proposed dipping pool. In addition, if you look at the regulations, 241317G, which is the overlay regulations for this district, it provides that customary and incidental uses and structures are permitted in this district, subject to use limitations and performance standards, this proposal meets the performance standards contained in 1317D, and the dipping pool is obviously an accessory structure. I'm almost done. Wrapping up, it's also, we would suggest, consistent with the purposes and intent of the DCPC, there's no impact on, and these are the, some of them here, no impact on historic or community character of the property or surrounding area, as this will have very limited visibility, it does not impact any scenic views or vistas to the water, there's no adverse impact on natural resources, again, slight reduction in hardscape, and with the naturalization, we think there'll be an improvement, there's no work within any A or V zones, and this does not adversely affect any coastal wetland resource system, again, as determined by the Conservation Commission with its order. So wrapping up, we would suggest that based on the type of pool, being a dipping pool, its small size, and its citing, both the pool and equipment, that there is no substantial detriment to the neighborhood, the regulations allow these types of accessory structures, but for that condition four in the 2019 decision, we would not be here this evening. So, happy to answer any questions you may have, our team is here, Mr. Hoyt is here too, if you have any questions, and I think I'll stop at this point.
It's not gonna have a full basement and two floors, right?
Nope, nope, just a little dipping pool.
Okay.
He learned. I have one question.
Sure.
So, 29 zoning did not have setback requirements, it just split commercial and...
Correct, yes.
Got it.
I have one question. How do you intend to naturalize the back?
I'll let Matt respond to that.
Yeah, it's gonna be removing the lawn area that's there, and then it's being planted, I can't remember off the top of my head, but it's being planted with low shrubs that are part of the approved conservation list for...
Cranberry viburnum.
I'm sorry?
Probably.
Viburnum. That's what they always say. Twenty after ten, really?
Sorry, I gotta ask.
Your presentation is done. I think, we don't have any questions, do we?
I have just one, well, I just have one quick one, so, I'm trying to think back of when we did this, certainly sat on this, I remember at the time, and I don't wanna speak for anybody, but, you know, the three things that seemed to be, was the issue of noise, that the lot seemed extremely built out, certainly Chair Dewey had mentioned that he thought it was a very built-out lot, and you had a neighbor that appeared to be vehemently against, you know, that. Was there, I can't tell by this, and I don't remember, forgive me, if the structure, if the abutter's home is in very close proximity to the pool?
It is, they're here, so I think you'll hear from them, but they do have a structure on their property that also is right up against the setback to other lot.
Okay, and when you said that it wasn't gonna change the building coverage, do they consider it a landscape feature, or is it because you're taking away and adding?
So, and there's a definition in the DCPC of building coverage...
So, specific to DCPC?
Yeah, that excludes pools.
Okay.
It is a structure, though, so it does count towards the lot coverage.
Lot coverage, right.
But again, we're removing hardscape so that there actually is gonna be a net decrease in lot coverage with this proposal.
As defined in that DCPC, it does have its own set of definitions.
Okay, those are my only questions for right now, thank you.
Okay, back to the board. Anything? I'll open public comment, do we have anybody wishing to speak? Please.
Good evening. Michael Gill from the law firm of Gill Devine in Hyannis, right down the street, I'm here on behalf of the abutters, directly abutters, and the only abutters who are really impacted by this. Those abutters are the McMahon family and the Carlson family, they've owned the property for 31 years, I believe, the property is used full-time, there are three families who use it, one family that's in there full-time, there are two structures there, both Patricia Carlson, one of the siblings, and Margaret McMahon are here today, they are not absentee owners, they're here, present all the time. Couple of you, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Webb, and Mr. Hurwitz, were here on July 12th, okay? That was nine months ago, okay, we were here for the exact same presentation. At the time, the board, in its wisdom, concluded that this was not an appropriate use, this location pool is not an appropriate use, but before they could put that on the record, the application was withdrawn. It has now been resubmitted. The only change is to move the mechanicals from right next to the pool to the opposite side of the accessory structure, that is the only change, okay? And while that is appreciated, that also doesn't meet nearly any of the objections that were raised on July 12th. What are those objections, right? We can really, you know, it really comes down to a few things, noise and privacy, that's one, lot coverage and setbacks, that's two. Number three, fidelity to the board's prior decisions, that's very important, okay? May I approach the chair?
Sure.
This is how close the pool will be to the living quarters of my client's property.
Oh, you have living quarters right on the property line?
That is how close it'll be. I think, you know, I feel like I can just, everyone who wants to go home, drop the mic, and that should be enough, right? But unfortunately, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta talk more. First, this is a pool, okay? I've heard plunge pool and dipping pool. Walks like a duck, acts like a duck, sounds like a duck, it's a duck, it's a swimming pool, okay? Swimming pools are noisy, okay? My clients, again, using four feet, four and a half feet from living quarters to the pool, their deck is right there, their living quarters are right there, okay, right where that light is, that's where Jack likes to have his morning coffee, and he's gonna see people swimming in the pool under him, okay, or dipping in the pool, that's the case may be. Do any of you want that at your house, right, your place of peace, your place of quiet? Now, as I said, my clients have been there for 31 years, they have been in close proximity to the abutter, since she's been there, and a lot longer, they've lived in harmony with their, with their abutters, there's never been an issue that I'm aware of, okay, but this seems to be a bridge too far, this is just unreasonable given the circumstances. Pools are loud, and it's not the mechanicals, again, mechanicals, they've mitigated it somewhat, okay, and I guess, if you, the idea being, if you put it by the road, the road will drown out the noise of the mechanicals, but what happens at nighttime, when there's not as much traffic, you'll still hear the mechanicals, 'cause noise, as your brother, Paul Pennard, said, noise has to go somewhere, you know, it'll go up, it goes right up to where they sleep, okay? So, the, you know, the standards here are substantial detriment, I'll read it, you know, this is in your discretion, right? The board clearly may grant the relief sought, right? Not disputing that. But that's only after finding an evaluation of all the evidence presented, as it relates to the fulfillment of the spirit and intent of this chapter, without substantial detriment to the neighborhood affected, okay? What I'm gonna prove to you is that, that they fail on that test, okay? So again, let's talk about the noise and the, well, let's talk about the lot coverage. We had a catuit property up here earlier, okay, in Pompaneset, that lot coverage was significantly less than this is. We have 70% lot coverage here, 69.4%, this is barely, this is one of the most overdeveloped sites in the town of Barnstable, there's barely any impervious area, right, or pervious area, excuse me, okay? That lot coverage is gonna stay about the same, but now we're adding a new structure, and under the DCPC or any other definition, a pool is a structure, you're adding a new structure, and you're putting it three feet from the property line. Now, Attorney Cox, who does a wonderful job, highlights the fact that, well, the existing setback from the accessory structure to the property line is one and a half feet, and the pool's three feet, so that's a good thing. You know, I submit to you that 18 inches is, where it comes to a pool close to your house, is not gonna do it. Mr. Webb, you brought up in two of the hearings tonight, people trying to cram things into areas where they shouldn't be go, right? You brought it up in the Pompaneset one, as well as the 40B application, and this, this site is significantly, significantly more dense than either of those sites. Not only that, you have neighbors' sleeping quarters that are, that are four and a half feet from the pool, directly up above, where is that sound gonna go? Again, the concern of this board was less the mechanicals at the July 12th meeting, it was about the use of the pool, okay? Use of the pool. And so, let's talk about some of those, some of those comments, if you will, be with me for a second. So, you know, one thing we've heard today is, you know, because it can be allowed, it should, right? Well, you had a condition in the last special permit that was granted in 2019 that said, this lot is fully built out, no more structures, right? And Attorney Cox made the argument that, that's in a lot of decisions, and it gives them, the applicant, the right to come back, and yes, it does, it does, but what Chairman Dewey said, 'cause he was at that hearing in 2019, Mr. Hanson was also at that meeting, that hearing in 2019, and what they said, well, quote, quote Mr. Dewey, "There is definitely a lot going on with that lot, I said that in 2019, the property is maxed out," okay? So, when they put this condition in there in 2019, I think they meant it, Chairman Dewey meant it, I think Mr. Hanson meant it, 'cause that's what they said at the last hearing, okay? Chairman Dewey also said, "The noise to the abutter is the major concern, we have to look at this objectively, okay? Even though this applicant may wanna just dip or plunge, you know, the special permit runs with the property, who's gonna own it in five years, in 10 years, or 15 years, this special permit exists, so is there gonna be a family, young kids, are they gonna dip and plunge? I don't think so." Mr. Hanson, to quote, "I can assure you, pools are loud when in use. In use, if you had a pool 15 feet from your back door, and there are smaller people in the pool, it's loud, it's loud during use, there's no question about that, if it's kids, but we can't determine who's gonna be in the pool, and you can't regulate that." This was said at the July 12th hearing. Paul Pennard was probably the strongest on this, he said, again, "Sound has to go somewhere, has to go up." I have a problem, and I'm quoting right now, I listened to the hearing today, and I listened to it yesterday, okay? "I have a problem currently with this being more detrimental to the neighborhood, I think it is, I think this is shoehorning something in there that is right in the face of abutting neighborhoods." Quote, "I believe it is significantly detrimental to the neighborhood, particularly the abutters, to place something that has potential for noise and lack of privacy in their backyard, I have a big problem with that." He also talked about his five grandkids, right, and how, with, what kind of use they'd make of the pool. Ms. Denise Johnson asked where the pool equipment's gonna be, and then adding specifically about the use of the pool and the noise associated with it, she said, "I agree that it is a detriment to the neighborhood, I've been in a situation where a pool was right below my living quarters, and it is very difficult, and I don't think pool equipment's quiet." The whole idea of a pool under a guesthouse, she found funny. And Mr. Hurwitz, I don't, you were on the board that night, but I don't think you were a voting member, you talked about sound attenuation of the mechanicals, and one of the things you mentioned was, the first thing you consider is proximity to bedrooms, right? So, we're still fairly close to the bedrooms, 'cause the bedrooms are up above the pool equipment now, so that really hasn't, hasn't been mitigated at all. In addition, we had comments on the stone wall, the arborvitae hedge, the privet hedge, and who's gonna maintain that in the event that they are compromised. The applicant has a letter from Crawford Land Management that says that these arborvitae who've been there for 40, 50 years, that they will not be compromised. I don't know that, but let's put some guarantees behind that. The stone wall, it's gonna be right next to the pool, so if that's compromised, who's gonna pay for that being fixed, okay? But ultimately, you know, this board put a condition in the special permit in 2019, it put it in for a reason. When they came back in July, okay, this board, your fellow members, looked at those conditions and looked at this particular project and said, "This is not suitable," okay, this is, this is while technically it qualifies for not needing setback... This is, this is while technically, it qualifies for not needing setback relief. Is that the spirit and intent of the DCPC regulations? That you could put a pool three feet from a property line, four and a half feet from where people sleep? Is that the spirit and the intent? And I think we can argue, we could submit that it's clearly detrimental to the neighbors. Right? These are the only neighbors affected by it. Okay? You know, in, in law, you see it in litigation a lot. Attorneys forum shop. They're trying to get the right judge. They're trying to get the right juries. Right? Well, we, the applicant had their chance nine months ago. Same exact arguments. Right? And this board said no. Okay? They indicated, they signaled they were gonna say no. So the application was withdrawn. So here we are nine months later, and I know it's late. I know everybody's hungry. And you know what? Last time I was here was, it was July 12th, and the air conditioning was broken, and we were all sweating. It was about 90 degrees, and here we are again, and we're still sweating. But, but the point is, you know, nothing's changed. The mechanicals have moved from one side of an accessory structure to the other. An accessory structure that's a foot and a half against the property line. Right? So take, given all that, I would respectfully submit to you that, that this board should have fidelity to its prior decisions and the decisions that were made by some of your fellow board members. You shouldn't, an applicant shouldn't be allowed to come back in nine months with a different set of members and ask for the same relief and expect a different result. Any questions?
So it really, I mean, it's obviously allowed. We, we know that. And, you know, in looking at the, the situation of where the, where things are situated, you know, other dwelling, just so we're clear, I don't think, it's not, we are kitty-corner, correct? We are not exactly on the other side of the pool. I think it really does-
That's actually not true, I don't think.
Is it not? I mean-
Yeah, you can see right where the, where the porch is and the windows, it's looking, it's looking right down into it.
Maybe we could pull up Google Earth, because I, I also think it's more kitty-corner than directly-
I just wanna make sure that, as we're hearing two sides of it, that we, we truly understand the proximity of things. I think a lot of it, and, and as I remember the last time, it really did come down to noise and the inability to control how the pool is used, because you wouldn't wanna do that, and you can't technically. You either allow someone to use it or not. Was there, before, it was, I guess it would be more a, a question for Attorney Cox, was there any further conversation with the abutter after the withdrawal, the initial withdrawal?
We-
No withdrawal, sorry. Just continuation?
No, we haven't. As, as the board may recall, my client actually reached, Mr. Gill initially showed up during the conservation commission proceeding that predated the going, us coming to the zoning board last time. And my client did reach out to their neighbors to see if they'd be willing to have a conversation. And the response they got was that they would prefer just to have the attorneys deal with each other rather than neighbor to neighbor. So we were disappointed in that. But, you know, that's their prerogative, obviously. So no, we haven't had any communication since this was withdrawn. Except for this evening, just briefly.
This evening, yeah. And, and, you know, to my client's, you know, credit, and mine, we found out about this hearing yesterday, because the mail had been forwarded to a different location. So that's, that's, we, we had no idea that we were gonna be here again, kinda regurgitating the same arguments that we did nine months ago.
I find, I mean, it's, it's very difficult to sit up here and listen, because, you know, there is the fact of, yes, the pool can be there. It meets the requirements, especially in DCPC. You know, we're also, there is no question, when in use by, not adults, let's just call it what it is, and nobody's saying it, but when it's in, you know, kids, whatever, they're loud. I know they're loud. And I'm not just sort of pulling that out of my pocket. I have a plunge pool 15 feet off my house. Again, my kids are loud, maybe some other kids aren't. It's fine, but it's still a perspective. I don't know how you reconcile that, and I'm, I'm surprised that there hasn't been any conversation to see if there was any sort of anything there that could be, I don't know how you mitigate that. That's-
As I, through you, Mr. Chair, my client would be happy to have those conversations. You know, the message that we were getting is that Mr. Gill's clients are just opposed to the idea altogether. I mean, if there are sort of mitigating things that we can have a discussion with them on, I think we're more than happy to try and do that. The other point I would make is that this is, you know, a lawn area, so if there are kids, they're gonna play in the lawn, they're gonna make noise in the lawn, they're gonna be right against the promise-
I agree, but it's two different, I think it's two different things. I mean, again, you know, again, I think from personal experience, I can say, you know, we don't have structures that are close, but I'm only, I'm only using this as a relative example. But, you know, it is a different kind of noise, and there's no limits to the time of the day that it's being used, or things like that, because again, it's either granted or it's not. So-
I mean, it may, I don't know if Mr. Hoyt wants to comment. He's the pool expert, but I do think there is a distinction, or at least I've told there's a distinction between, you know, a swimming pool and a dipping pool, given the very small size of this, and the fact there's no diving board, there's no slide-
I understand. I mean, mechanicals can go underground-
It's not made for swimming, it's just made for-
Can I butt in for a second here? Excuse me, Anna. If you hit the little thing on the bottom corner, left, satellite view-
Yeah.
That'll show everything you wanna show.
Yep, that's right.
And then you can zoom in.
Eliza, I stole your thing.
Well, it's a current enough view. The buildings haven't moved.
All right. So that's the property line right there. Right? So that is the accessory, that's where the pool's gonna go.
Right here, if I could.
Right here. This is my client's living quarters here. This is a deck.
This is the guesthouse right there. There's the corner. The pool corner's gonna be here. You have topography elevation going up, you have the stone wall, you have the hedge, you have the arborvities, and then you have their structure. The structure is no way three feet from the, from the proposed corner of the pool. I can't tell you exactly what it is, because I don't have a measurement on the, on their guesthouse. Their, that's their guesthouse, main house, guesthouse, that's right on the property line as well. And then you have the pool, that's gonna be the corner of the pool, that's gonna be closest to their guesthouse, is gonna land right about there. So it's not, it's definitely more than three feet. I mean, it's close, yeah, it's close, but also too, if I could just add, you know, the moving of the pool equipment, which was in response to comments we heard, is significant, I think. It's actually 15 feet off the property line. It's not, it's, it's meeting the current setback. It's screened with fence, with landscaping, it's adjacent to the existing structure, so you're gonna have a wall of the guesthouse that's screening it as well. So, you know, there has been, you know, effort to, you know, try to address that, the sound aspect.
And I'm sure it's not that low-budget pool pump that makes whirring noises every time it kicks on either.
Right, and that's why Dylan's here too, to be able to speak to that. I actually did some quick decibel research, and for variable speed pool pumps currently, their levels are around 45 decibels. That's like, that's a low dishwasher sound. That's like, one of the quiet dishwasher sounds, that's the level.
So you're proposing to put the pool equipment right there? Right? Right? It was there, now it's there.
Pool equipment?
That's the mitigation. That's it.
Could I ask a question, Attorney Gill? So, you mentioned a few times that, and maybe it's best heard from your client, you know, that it would be a bother if you were sleeping, that it was near sleeping quarters. And, I mean, during the day, there's really not much you can do for noise in general, but i- is that more of the concern? Is that, you know, there's, you know, you could hear a pool a couple of, I guess my question is, is there, is it something where, during certain hours, you're concerned, or is it just in general doesn't want the noise?
I think it's in general doesn't want the noise, and understand that people swim in pools at the, during the evening.
I understand, that's why I'm asking the question. Where is the concern like-
Could be during the day, could be in the evening.
If we were to-
Next family that moves in there. Could be midnight rendezvous. I don't know. I'm not saying this applicant's gonna do it, but-
Correct.
You can't regulate that. The thing that's important, though, to remember is that you, you know, can, can this board, does it have the discretion to grant the relief sought? Yes, it does. Okay? Should it? Okay? There has to be a finding that this is within the spirit and the intent, okay, of the DCPC regulations, that it's not a substantial detriment to the neighbors. On both of those, I think we fail. This is, you know, putting a pool three feet from a property line is not within the spirit of the setback requirements for pre-existing nonconformity. Okay? This is a brand-new structure. I, I don't know how one can, can pass the straight-faced test and say, "That is not, that's within the spirit and the intent of the guidelines." And the other thing is substantial detriment. Here we are, right? You see it. And I, I don't wanna get too close to anybody again, but you, that proximity to, to a pool is, you know, it's unsettling, to say the least, right?
About it. Right.
When was the accessory structure on your client's property built?
I looked at that, I think it was like 40s or 50s, maybe? It's been there a long time, 40s or 50s.
It's shown on the land card plan.
Yeah.
And, and, and you guys have refinished it, obviously, since.
Yeah. It looks larger than it was on the 1930s land card plan, yeah.
Yeah. I'm sure.
What's interesting, you know, from the, the old, the old accessory structure here, that was in 1989, they asked for relief from this board. Okay? And that, that ZBA decision says that it's four feet from the property line, and they allowed an expansion. And they allowed it to, well, now it's a foot and a half. So I guess they allowed the expansion within the setback back then, on the condition of no storage, no plumbing. Then they came back in 2019 and said, "Let's lift that restriction of no storage, no plumbing." Okay? Let's make it a family apartment." And this board did that. And my clients did not object. They didn't come to the hearing, they were fine with that. Okay? But this is a bridge too far. Now, one other, you know, quick point on that. The last hearing, Chairman Dewey, talked about whether affidavits have been filed in compliance with the existing special permit, and I think we're supposed to get an answer on that. I'm not sure we ever did. So that's something like, if you're not in compliance with the special permit that's in existence right now, should we be granting relief from it? Right? I'm not sure of that, that was, that came up at the last hearing, and we never got an answer. We also were gonna get, I thought, a letter from Commissioner Florence that was to support Attorney Cox's conclusions that setback relief is not allowed, which I, I'm not so sure, because you're putting a new structure in the setback. Right? But, you know, those things would be helpful as well.
I'd like to hear what the other board members have to think about this. You gotta say something.
Somebody besides Mark. Oh, Larry?
I, I think the lot is overbuilt out. I really do. You know? Everything has been done very nice, and, you know, but there comes a point where enough is enough. And I, I think the neighbors have a very good argument.
Aaron?
You know, again, I struggle with this one. It's, it's, man. I struggle with the, the, with the, our decision here, which, again, was rendered in 2019, saying this lot was fully built out. So here we are. And yet-
Well, that's a condition, remember, on every single-
Of course. Yep, I do. Yep, I understand. And they are back here, by there, right, to, to appeal that, so I'm good. I, yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with the pool there, actually, quite honestly. I don't, I think it's, again, we're talking about a secondary structure of the abutters, not the main house, that I don't believe is houses people year-round. You can tell me that till you're blue in the face. I don't, I don't believe that's the case. So forgive me if I, you know, I just, I do not believe that there's people there year-round. Now, regardless, are there people there when the pool is an oper, is, is being used, potentially? But you got a gigantic house, main house, with a secondary structure that my gut tells me is more for overflow type of, you know? But again, I, again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not here to argue with you, I'm telling you how I feel about it. Okay? So that, all that being said, the space is not three feet from the, from the adjacent house, is shown on Google Earth, I'm looking at it right here, it's kitty-corner to it. The front corner of the pool, closest to your prop, to your client's property, is going to be, again, below grade, stone wall, arborvitie, and at least, again, I can't, I don't, I can't, I don't have a ruler here, but it's gonna be 10, 12 feet from the corner of your, your client's secondary property, their secondary structure on this, on the property. So, you know, you, is there a pool on, on your client's property?
No.
No pool. As you look at the Google Earth, you can, I mean, there are pools, again, all over this particular area of, of, you know, there's one, in fact, abutting the applicant's property to the other side. Again, I, you know, so I, I feel like if, I, I don't know what the answer is here. It's sort of neighbor against neighbor here, in my opinion, at this point. It fears, it appears to me like the applicant has sought to remedy whatever might happen, and, you know, the, your applicant, your, your clients have sort of indicated that they'd rather just let it be handled in this forum. So I don't know how we can mitigate that, per se. We can't force neighbors to get together and figure out how to make this happen, so, but I don't necessarily have a problem with the pool being there, personally. And I think you, I think they've addressed what was our biggest concern in July, which was noise of the mechanical equipment. And that, to me, was one of Paul Pennard's biggest gripes. I wish he was here tonight, and, and the fact that the pool equipment will be very close to the road, clearly screened, fenced, landscaped, you know, it, it will minimize a low-grade, you know, low-sounding dishwasher is not gonna bother somebody sleeping, you know, 30 feet away, in my opinion.
Yep. Yeah, I really don't like these neighbor against neighbor things either, having been through it myself. So I also don't appreciate the two-foot example, a little dramatic. I'm getting tired, sorry. When in fact, I mean, you made it seem as if your client's house is directly adjacent to the pool. It's not.
Right above.
Are you looking at the same thing we are?
Right above.
I don't see where you see that.
Because-
It's gotta be right there. Right, that's the corner. That's the corner of the pool. Right, that's the corner, that's the corner of the pool.
I don't have a scale with me, but that's gotta be thirty or forty feet if I'm more-
No, it's like five. Yeah, it's not a, yeah.
And it's high.
It's probably, yeah, it's probably ten or so, and, and we're talking the corner of the pool, not the usable area, we're talking the closest corner, too.
And again, behind a great difference and large arbivite as well.
The balcony I see up there, to the left of where you're pointing at.
The corner, right, the pool's gonna sit like this, right?
And I'm looking at the balcony even farther to the left, that's what he was talking about, the balcony.
Oh, over here?
Yeah, there.
Oh, yeah, that's-
That's thirty or forty feet away from the pool.
Probably, yeah, maybe twenty-five or something like that, yeah.
And I'd like to go back to your statement about, it's a play area, and if they're not out there playing croquet, or whatchamacallit-
Cornhole.
Cornhole, or whatchamacallit ball.
Bocce ball.
Pickleball.
Right.
You know, you can't say anything about a pickleball court if it was put up temporarily. I don't wanna, you know, say that with any, yeah. But, it's, I don't know, it's, I don't know. How does the board feel about this? Manny? Manny would like to say something, I know you would.
I wasn't at the earlier hearing, but-
I thought I was, but I wasn't mentioned, so.
I, I used to live off Cape, in Milton, and we had a yard that was fairly small, maybe, I don't know, hundred feet by thirty, pretty small. The neighbors next door had a pool, and it was right outside, on the other side of the fence. And noise propagates, okay? And that's a hundred feet away, I mean, and, and, I think his point about what we are proving here will live forever, right? It's, we're not saying anything about the current owners, but, you know, kids' parties, I mean, it, it's, there's a lot of noise. And, and this is, then, what I'm troubled by here, though, is by necessity, these, these properties are very next to each other, and, you know, the existing accessory garage in family apartment is right there. I guess I'm torn. I, on the one hand, I see that this, this, would this be a detriment to the neighborhood or to the neighbors mostly affected? Yes. Substantial detriment? Is it consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance to, to, to put a structure a foot and a half from the property line? I, I'm torn.
Three feet.
Mr. Chairman, if, I mean, one of the things that we could look at, too, is sliding the pool a little closer to our client's property, if that would help. We've sort of cited it to be kind of even in that area, but it would be possible to slide it closer to the property, to the house, and away from the property line, if that's helpful to the board.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Would you allow the owner to speak?
Yes.
Oh, hi. Good evening. Patricia Carlson, I'm the trustee of the trust that owns the house currently, that my parents originally bought, my late parents originally bought in nineteen ninety-three. And I just wanted to address a couple of things that have come up in the different discussions, and in no particular order. One is the use of the accessory structure. It's kind of a weird house, to be honest, the main house, and a lot of the living, honestly, is done in what we call the accessory structure. And so part of our family does live there full-time for six months a year. And so it's not used occasionally, and it's not just used for overflow guests, it's, it's lived in and utilized. And so, and then the other thing that I wanted to mention is just again about, you know, we both have structures that are close to the line, they both were around way back when, and we have both done, you know, different improved, you know, renovations and that type of thing. And I just wanna go back to the fact that in, in two thousand nineteen, very significant change was made next door, and we were totally fine with it. We were noticed properly, we were aware of it, and, you know, we had no objection to it. And, you know, we're living right next door, and, and living the same way, and utilizing our property. And, and just also in terms of, you know, you talking about the neighbor versus neighbor thing, and we absolutely have, I would, you know, I don't want, like, lived in harmony, I would say there's been no, no issues. We were never approached before any of this came up, like, no one came and said, you know, "We're thinking about doing this," and, you know, the way that the Kattuitt family apparently did to their neighbors, like, no one came and said, "We're just thinking about doing this, what do you guys think? And maybe we could work something out, since we are so physically close to each other." And so, you know, I don't, I, the implication that we were like, not willing to cooperate at all, it was kind of a little bit late, like, we were a bit, like, sort of taken by surprise that this is happening, and again, because of the way the mail was working, you know, we, especially this time, I think I got an email, kinda after bedtime Monday night this week, about the, about this hearing. So we didn't know this was coming up again, until we got, we finally got the notice letter. And so I just wanted to speak, speak to that, that part of it. That's it, thank you.
Let me ask you, do you really see a pool as being that big of a problem? And is there any way-
It's kind of hard to explain the, the patio, that living, there's a lot of living over in that area, I have to, I don't know how to explain it.
Of your neighbors, right?
For us, you know, and so there's a, a little patio that sticks out, and, you know, if you're sitting out there, you do, I mean, those are our arbivite, and for some reason, like, a little section there is a little bit thinner than, you can see right through them, you can. And that, you know, that is fine, like, I don't, I wouldn't propose a big high wall or anything like that, that would kind of ruin the nature of everything, and maybe even somebody's sightlines to the water, who knows? But it's, it's always been, it's, it's a nice natural buffer, and it's really kind of all we've ever needed, you know, between the two parties and different parts of their family have lived there before, and various noise levels, and our kids were young once, and making their noise, and it's always been fine. But I think what we think is just, again, sort of the bridge too far, like, it's, it's, you know, this is a lot. If you're, if you're in there, and that is a one, it's hard to tell, but it is one level, so you're actually not that much higher, the bedrooms aren't, there's no two floors on that section, it's all on one level. And so you're, you're right there. So if there's any other questions, just about the-
Now, do they use the area behind, or, you know, to the south of their accessory structure that's adjacent to that patio, that's to the south of yours, adjacent to the property line?
I can't really speak to how they use their property.
Well, I mean, do you, do you notice them using that? Because if they do, and you don't notice it, then that's kind of insupportive.
We notice wherever, whenever we're each there, yeah. It's very close.
I don't wanna be insulting, but it's only a pool. I mean, they, they move the equipment, which is the only real, and it's not even a constant source of noise. I wish you people could just, you guys could just talk to each other and-
Mr. Chairman-
Kind of come to some kind of-
To your point, Matt has just sort of sketched a few little things that I think is worth us having a conversation with them, if they're willing to talk to us. I think we do have a few ideas that I think would hopefully mitigate some of the concerns that they're raised. So if Mr. Gill's client is willing to talk with my client or through attorneys, you know, I, I do think we have a few little revisions that we could propose.
We could continue this.
And could I add something, maybe just to add, maybe to just your thoughts of conversation, and this is only because, again, I would show you a picture, but I, I have a fourteen-by-eight plunge pool, probably, you know, closer than where you are there. I have small children. I find that the use is painfully infrequent.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
I'm being honest only because I, I think it's, it's, it's important to understand, I also am a big believer in quiet hours that the town has, which basically runs ten to seven, things like that. Just some things to consider if you are going to talk, that, you know, when kids are in it during the day, loud, it's loud.
Potentially, potentially.
Potentially. But, you know, again, kids, adults, quiet. Those, the, the mechanicals, they can actually be put underground, and we're, ours are underground, you can hear zero, nothing. But it's just some items that are maybe worth, you know, you, there's always a, an in-between somewhere that maybe, you know, soundproofing windows. I know it seems extreme, but, you know, maybe there's something there. Again, I'd be interested to hear what your conversation goes like, if that's amenable.
It'd be great if you guys, if we could continue this, and you could come to a, you know, some way to make everybody happy. How about an above-ground pool? No? Yes, there you go. So I'm gonna move to continue this, do you have a good, we gotta look at the schedule as well.
Could we?
How much time, Liza, would you like?
I don't think we need long. When is the next meeting?
April twenty-fourth is the next meeting, and then we have May eighth.
I think, will this board be there on, I heard there was some conflicts with, and April, you won't be there?
I think I'm not here. Apologies.
How about, on the April date, will you be here?
April twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Is Zoom?
It's by Zoom.
If that matters one way or another?
Yeah.
Zoom's not a possibility.
Now, if they make a bigger pool, you could have a diving board on your side of property.
Need one in here.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. Yeah, it's getting warm in here, it's not just me.
It's getting.
Did I, did I see Jim turn the heat up, or? He went over to the thermostat.
So if-